Evening, everyone. All right. Welcome to the regular session of the Berlin American Council for July 12, 2021. Please join us in a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And the town administrator will give us just a couple of housekeeping items for COVID-19 for golf.
For folks that are new, which you have outside in the hallway, there's a public facility restroom, there is warm water, soap, take towels, and an air dryer. There is a water dispensary, dispensary out here in the hallway as well. Should you need to leave the building, you can go out these double doors, right across the hall, down the steps, hit the panic bar, and you're free to go.
Thank you. Got some chuffles in the audience. Great description. All right, so the first item on our agenda is your approval of the executive session minutes from June 28, 2021.
Motion to approve.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Ours.
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Ner, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And let the record reflect that the executive session minutes from June 28, 2021 passed unanimously with Councilmember Burrell absent. Agenda item number 1B is the statement of closure for our executive session held on June 28, 2021. The purpose or the time and location of the meeting was June 28, 2021 at 6:30 PM. The location was here at Town Hall in the council chambers and then moving to the conference room. The purpose for the executive session was to discuss the Berlin Fire Company and Berlin Fire Company EMS FY22 draft agreements. The date and time that we returned back to the public meeting, that may be an error. Kelsey, it says June 14th, it should be June 28, 2021 at 7:00 PM. We'll just make that change. The record reflects a motion by Councilmember Ner, a second by Councilmember Ours, with Councilmember Burrell and Nichols voting in favor. Councilmember Purnell joined us at 6:33 when we went over to the conference room. The statutory authority of the closure was under the general provisions, Article 3-305B, item number 14. Before a contract is awarded or bids are opened to discuss a matter directly related to a negotiating strategy or the contents of a bid or proposal, if the public discussion or disclosure would adversely impact the ability of the public body to participate in the competitive bidding or proposal process. So the items that were discussed were the draft FY22 agreements with the Berlin Fire Company and Berlin Fire Company EMS. And this statement's being made by me, the mayor, for the presiding officer. All right. Agenda item number 1C is the approval of the regular session minutes from June 28, 2021.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Councilmember Ner. I have a second by Councilmember Nichols, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And let the record reflect that the regular session minutes from June 28, 2021 passed unanimously forwarded up. Now, up next is agenda item number 1D is the work session minutes for June 28, 2021.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Councilmember Ours.
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Nichols, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And let the record reflect that the work session minutes from June 28, 2021 passed unanimously. Agenda item number 2 is a motion 2021-13, Stephen Decatur Park Disc Golf and Mr. Austin Woodison and Eastbound Disc Golf are going to be leading the discussion. So come forward. I think you have an interesting piece of equipment in the back, if you'd like to bring that up so we can take a look.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. And I know several of you, but just introduce yourselves for the record, please.
Sure. I'm Austin Woodison, resident here in town. Oh, Sean Duncan, Vice President.
Thank you for coming.
Ready to make the first plug run on?
And if you don't mind, could you just maybe bring it over here so that we can still see with the camera? That's perfect. Great deal.
All right.
Thank you.
I'm going to quickly.
Austin, do you want to introduce the rest of your team?
Sure. Everyone. PJ Whitney.
Josh Mack from Backfield.
Randolph Preston.
Wonderful. And I took together a brief little, I'll say a kind of a plan of execution. We all did together.
Just be safe.
There you go.
Thank you.
Very good. You're welcome. And I believe there should be enough passed down the line here. If the map pictures run out, do you mind sharing?
Yep.
Thank you.
It says, and it's also in the public package.
What's different? Real quick, were you calling with this?
Oh, nothing. That's just that we weren't sure that you were going to have it printed or not, so to be safe.
All right. So tell us a little bit about the project and what you hope to accomplish.
Absolutely. Well, I thank you both for, all of you guys for having us here. Appreciate it. I guess at the beginning of the year, we kind of came across the idea of wanting to add an additional element to the Decatur Park, well, in Berlin in general. And we're speaking to Mr. Purnell and both you, we kind of surveyed the possible properties here in town and which would be the best kind of facility to maintain and host this type of arena. And Decatur Park, Decatur One, that seemed to have all of the elements that really would appeal to both the disc golf sport element, but also to the community element, which we feel is a big part of the disc golf community, being able to facilitate a course in a community where people can park their vehicles, play around, walk downtown, enjoy breakfast at rinkies before they show up, or go to the Atlantic Hotel or the Globe thereafter, or participate in any of the events that are going on in town, and kind of just adding a new community element to the park and trying to utilize the areas that are outlined through the park that really aren't being currently utilized by the people. With the idea of keeping our, both the interaction of the game away from the children's areas, as well as the residents that align it, and kind of build a fun, playable course that we could possibly generate some impact here in the community of disc golf and maybe have a tournament down the road, or, but really a four, three course that would allow the community to kind of get involved during the league nights and see if we can't make our name for disc golf here in Berlin.
It's pretty interesting. So explain this piece of equipment here, if you don't mind.
So typically in disc golf, which it mirrors the traditional sport of golf, you tee from a tee pad. You have a driver on the pedal, so it has a sharper edge. So this is meant to fly farther, similar to like a three or a five wood. You're throwing this off a tee pad surface on the intended hole. You come to your lie. We have minis that we mark our lie with, similar to how you do in golf. And I would throw an up shot towards the basket. And the basket is the ultimate goal, you know? So here is my up shot. And I just. That would be for a three. I just hold out. So instead of tapping the ball into a cup, I just hold out in the basket. And the allure of the sport is that these discs range anywhere from $6 to $20, you know, for the nicer ones. And with one or two discs, you can enjoy the sport and you don't have to have a tee time, pay any greens fees, it's just about availability. In the last year with COVID, disc golf really shined as a sport that by default is socially distant, because we typically walk, you know, a few feet apart from each other. Most people agreed that outside was a bit more safe, you know, in those conditions. And I don't know if you saw ESPN recently, but disc golf is really taking off. We just had a world championship. Had one of the greatest moments in sports I've ever personally seen. So I don't know if you saw that. We're getting there, we're getting on the map.
Well, do you want to explain the course a little bit to us? I know you have a map here and it's also available on the screen.
We adore the park, and especially since I have the opportunity of living here in a frequented regular league for both myself and working on, just being in the neighborhood. The parking lot that's closest to the playground seems to be the most utilized portion of the parking lot. So we had kind of developed a game plan around using that secondary parking lot that's off the back as kind of being the disc golf portion of the parking lot. That way we wouldn't be interfering with the current traffic that's there. And the idea would be that if you start at the pavilion, which is typically if we were playing a league night, you know, 15 to 30 guys show up on a league night, we meet at the pavilion, we say this is the layout for the evening, and we'll be able to go out on the course and play around. So the pavilion being hubbed, you can see where hole number one is, and that's the closest thing to any interaction where there's currently a lot of traffic, but we're throwing away from it and out into the field. And then we kind of outline and work through the perimeter of the property, crossing over the street, going around pond, and coming back to where we are. If you notice on every one of the holes, there are two pin placements. The reason for it is we want to put an elementary course in that's kid-friendly, beginner-friendly, and as well as putting on that same exact tee pad at a little bit more advanced pad. So this is one for a bit more challenging, so as you progress and you want to do it. But in the infinite variations, and we reference Shoemaker Park in our meeting with the Parks Commission, they currently have two tee pads and two pins, so you can play four different ways at Shoemaker within the parameters of their park. And it's a very similar scenario to this, where they have a playground and water functioning and different things that we interact with, and it makes that appeal. But we're in the woods and on any given Saturday, if either Shoemaker are here, I mean, the coexisting would really work well. Like, we'll be on the outskirts of the area, the people that are interacting with the park, we barely have any impact by it if you're walking through the park. There's proper signage that says any blind area where there's a possibility of a disc coming in an area, that we signage clearly in front of it saying, hey, you're entering into a flying area. But in all of the years that I've played, I've never once seen an actual person get hit with a frisbee. It's very distant when you're throwing off into the field. So it's, I can see where there could be concern there, but just to put it to rest, it's very unlikely, probably better chance of getting struck by lightning.
Neither of which we would like.
Neither. Absolutely correct. But the idea is that the course in itself is semi-temporary, meaning that the tee pads we would put down are semi-permeable, pavers, they can be moved at any time. The pins that are in the ground are merely postholes that get dug in the ground. This one has a round base to it, but the ones that would actually be installed in the course have a locking mechanism so that no one can seal them. And as like we have developed the course, and we'll get to the planned portion of it, which is how I would explain like the way we would get this accomplished. But the idea is that we would have an opportunity to kind of, they figure out the best way to run this course so that it doesn't interfere with anyone. If there's a need to make a change, it's that simple. Does that make sense?
I think so.
Yeah.
You mentioned the Parks Commission. What was their opinion of the project?
I think we had a unanimous vote. A few of the members are here now and.
In favor?
Yes, sir. And Mike had to come out with us and tour the course. And at the time, we walked through each hole and kind of talked about each element. We're aware that there's some wetlands portions to the thing, and Sean can speak on the conservation piece of the puzzle and how we want to improve the, like there's vines taking over trees back there. We want to be ambassadors for the park to kind of help clean up the area as well, and also with the invasive species and kind of making sure that our sport coexists, but also leaves it better than we found it.
Yeah. In the spirit of growing our sport and also just the selfish want to grow, you know, have more courses, we've tried to make disc golf unanimous for the basic species management. And that makes for better relationships with parks that we can provide a service that they usually don't have a budget to address. So I think that's a good advantage to disc golf in general.
If I may interject, just this Sunday, yesterday, we were at Shoemaker Park cleaning up for a tournament that is going to be held in two weeks, and we had 24 people out there helping. We cleaned up a lot of poison ivy and briars, picked up sticks, just kind of made the park look a lot better and more playable for us in particular.
We even cut down some dead trees that were a potential hazard for falling.
14 hours?
So that's like 48 to 72 hours right there.
Yeah.
And I missed your comment.
Oh, I said, we also cut down some dead trees that were, you know, a potential safety hazard of the park. There are walking trails there and we see the dead trees and stuff like that. So we contacted the Wyman County Parks and said, we're doing a cleanup day, this is what we're going to do, X, Y, and Z. They approved it. We showed up, you know, 24 of us out there on a Sunday morning and all just did it. And then we had a little cookout afterwards and enjoyed it. So there is a whole community aspect to it that a lot of people don't see.
And that's one of the things that I say as a person who's interactive with it from an elementary beginner level to getting involved with the club, is that every park that this is associated and attached with is a, it's like basically putting 50 ambassadors into the property and making sure they're taking care of people that really respect the property and people that are looking to make sure that this is something that thrives. And as a result, you end up with a cleaner place than you started with.
Very nice. Now, tell us a little bit about the plan to get from A to Z.
Well, initially, I guess as a broad stroke before we go through the line items, initially the idea would be that we, there's canvas baskets, so a much more temporary version of this, that's kind of like a chair that opens up at the beach and it has like catchers. So we would imagine using the club's 18 that we have, we would want to set up a temporary round where the club could come out and we can make sure that none of the holes are leaning towards some sort of element of hazard or whatever may go in before we actually install anything. So with that being said, I believe that we have three rounds of temporary disc golf to kind of vet the course and allow everyone to get through and make sure that we're putting both, you know, a, the user-friendly one for the beginner course and a little bit more challenging, but also make sure that we cross all of our t's and not our i's before we put a pin in the ground. And then I believe it's an eight-week cycle from start to finish?
Yeah, that's what we projected, you know, we're flexible. But we want to make sure that we get our member feedback and we're not, you know, it's not just the core group deciding what the course is going to look like for the long term. And also make sure, you know, there's no safety concerns that you just couldn't predict. I think that's a good cycle to kind of run through a few times and agree on it and, you know, kind of confer with Berlin and move on from there.
So this evening, were you seeking approval for the whole project? Are you seeking approval for the pilot phase and then come back and say, hey, look, this is our modification?
This would be a good time to jump into page number two that we gave you, that's the first page that's not the map. It's on the one you presented. That has an actual layout of what we suggest the plan be. I don't have my own funding. There it is, one second. Are you talking about this? Yeah. Does that have the schedule?
Say, I haven't. We got it.
Yeah. I'm sorry, we handed them all out. Yeah, so.
Sure. So again, this was a loose projection, but, you know, given if things go well tonight, we could start, really, we could start right away, but, you know, we kind of left a few weeks just to have some space. But say August 1st, we start, we have a weekly round with the club. It's like a tags round. So tags are back tags, and everybody brings their own, they're all numbered, and the lowest score for the day is the lowest tag accordingly. So that's a weekly match, and it's just kind of like a, for pride, you know, so you have the lowest numbered back tag on your back. It brings out a good, a good number of people, we usually have between 20 and 30 people show up a week. So it'd be a great kind of test group for this project. So in week one, we do a tags round, potentially, we use our Facebook page and some surveys that we have already to get feedback. Then we try a league round, which is a traditional singles golf. And then for a different sort of crowd for the third event, we're thinking like a drop-in turn, because, you know, different people like to play different types of events. That being said, we could run through that and towards, after those events, kind of confer back with the core group, make sure that we're all in agreement, and after conferring with our member base, kind of submit a final layout to the town of Berlin. I think what we're asking for right now is the approval for the whole project, but we wanted to be very forthcoming with how we intend on implementing it. Because it's a, it's a, it's a group effort, for sure.
And you would say that you would have the idea of the pilot phase complete by the end of August? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And then? Okay.
There is an equipment issue to the puzzle and a fundraising issue to the puzzle that once this gets approved, kind of sets in motion, just like all the other kind of hard goods coming in from all over the place, we would have to place an order for the baskets. And we wanted to go with traditional Stephen Decatur colors because it's Decatur Park, white baskets for the elementary and blue baskets for things. So however long that ordering those parts would take is a question mark. And once we know that we're good to move forward and we have the funding to back it, we can actually give you a hard number of, it's going to be eight weeks out till we get it, two weeks out, whatever it may be. But in the interim, the club itself owns the temporary pop-up baskets, as well as 18, actually, regular-style disc catcher baskets. So the sleeves that get put in the ground with post holders that I were telling you about, we could get them in the ground with the temporary baskets while we're waiting for the order stuff to come. As far as the tee pads, we would use like the golf pin placements, you know, those white or blue or black things that just sit next to a golf course? Just put them in the ground, we throw from that area until we decide permanently or semi-permanently where we would want a tee pad. And then once we kind of have that layout, we want to bring it to and say, hey, we're ready for it. Installation plan, how long it would take you guys to be a part of it. And that's something that I had spoken to you gentlemen about, was possibility of using, if we were able to provide all the hard goods, maybe you guys could help us with a bit of the installation piece of the puzzle, anything that was outside of our skillset, or we could collaborate on that as a group.
And I think we would have some resources, Jeff and Jimmy, with Public Works to be able to help out with some of that installation. If it was like postholes and laying down some of the pavers and stuff like that, I think we could help out as it relates to that project if it gets approval. And even pulling in some volunteers.
Yeah, our group, our club has a pretty good breadth of individuals that work in the service industry from every aspect. We had guys that made, the cabinet makers that made us full mandatory signs. So anywhere on the disc golf course where you would want to detract a person from throwing a disc in an area, you put a little arrow saying that this, to play this hole, just like miniature golf, you have to go around this element. So that avoids any interactions with neighbors' properties or different things. One of the elements that we had discussed is a possible question mark as to the layout that you guys are looking at on the map is there is that water area. And playing disc golf, just like playing traditional golf, if your skillset is, if you're good enough to throw or hit across the water, you can. But just like in regular golf, you can play the longer route around. And that's the kind of way we want to encourage it. So you see the lines, that's the most direct path to the basket, but just as you would play any of the holes, there's a, a kind of a more comfortable way to get around with less of a water hazard. But in the event that something does end up in the water, most of us carry around a retractable pole so that you can just get the disc out of the water. The elements that people are going to be carrying with them are traditionally just a backpack that has an array of discs in it. And if they have, most people have a retriever for the water. But it's really a low-impact sport. You get a lot of people that are coming out and play around somewhere around two hours, two and a half hours, start to finish. So it's a relatively quick thing. You can even play nine on a lunch break, if that was something you're interested in.
So then tell us a little bit about September. I don't know if we've talked about that yet. And your projection, is there a back portion after?
Yeah. So this is kind of a projected schedule. I think the biggest question mark for us was that we were aware that it would be a collaborative project with tee pads and installing pavers. And really, as we worked that out, we have the workforce here to make that happen, you know, as soon as we're allowed to, I guess, but we wouldn't leave that room, so, because I know that, you know, there's other things going on.
And the specs for the tee pads, is that what we're looking at with the favorite?
Yeah. So we've played a handful of courses all over the area, and I'm taking a bunch of images. And one of the ones that is like probably, aside from pouring a concrete pad, which is too permanent, in our opinion, we wanted something semi-permeable so water could go through it, doesn't affect wetting areas, the next best idea would be one-by-one pavers. They're framed out by, you know, four by four wood beams on the outside, and they have crush and run to hold them in place. And at any time, we ever needed to pick up and remove it, it's much more manageable than dealing with the concrete, which would be the other alternative.
Another advantage to this particular tee pad is if a tree were to fall on it, you're not placing an entire concrete slab, you just fix it with, you know, a couple of pavers. And in the spirit of the course, we were thinking, you know, alternating blue and gray pavers to make the aesthetics and things appear.
And also that goes along with it, traditionally, when you land at a regular ball golf hole, you have a sign at the pad, and it shows you the layout of where you're trying to go and what you're trying to accomplish and where the pin placement is. And if you flip over the backside of that same sheet, it shows you the specs of what a disc golf signage could look like. And then imagining co-branding it with, you know, Berlin's branding, as well as the possibility of opening up sponsorship. And that's one of the elements we brought on this particular basket. At Oldishu Craft Brewing sponsors a couple of the events that we participated with before. But as you can see with the vinyl wrap, we're able to put branding on the band event and keep it within parameters of keeping it classy, not as an eyesore, there aren't signs everywhere. But then as we go into the fundraising portion of the puzzle, with 36 baskets in the ground, that gives 36 sponsorship opportunities for people in the community to want to get involved and put their names to something on the course.
So I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The collaborative efforts that you're talking about, are we talking about with just installation? Or how far is this collaborative effort meeting to go?
Mostly for installation. And that was only because that was the kind of people that we got in bucking in the Parks Commission. But I do welcome the help, of course.
We're looking to 100% donate all of the hardware and all the equipment to it. As far as the long term, the maintenance that's currently going on in the park, just the mowing of the property, maintaining within the park boundaries that you're currently doing, would keep up to it. The only, outside, we had talked to the parks, because you're going to have to mow around baskets now, which they're relatively easy to do, they're doing it all the other courses. They're, I mean, if you hit it with a large piece of equipment, yes, it could possibly be damaged, but for the most part, they're pretty sturdy and they're, they're easy to work around. That would be the only element that you guys would have to maneuver through.
Mow the rounds. This, this is the basket.
Correct.
And the tee, and the tee pads. If the tee pads are above ground level at all, you'll have to.
Do you have the, what do the tee pads look like?
Yes, ma'am. If you, on that, do you have the second page? There's a, it looks like there are checkers that you're looking at? Yep. Yeah. At the top, that's the, yeah, that's an architectural overhead of what a tee pad would look like. So those are one-by-one concrete pavers.
This little box?
Yes. Correct. And then the wood frame that goes around it, and the chunker ones.
You said it's one by one, so it picks off the ground like a denture so high?
Yeah. And also flushes the ground. You do make them flush, but then they sort of get overtaken, so there's a delicate balance there.
So I think the worst-case scenario would be an excess of grass around the edge of the tee pads and/or basket pins. And I don't know if it was provided, but we provided the Parks Commission with a sample licensing agreement. I worked at a Kinder Farm Park. Yeah. Kinder Farm Park in Miloslova, Maryland, and we had a similar agreement. We're more than happy to take that maintenance on. And not only do that, and we're to have a standing agreement, so expectations are set.
My concern is, I call it, I think it's great concept. Yeah, we'll tell you that. But I've done some research regarding that there. And from a risk management perspective, I mean, what I've read has not been favorable with young children like to explore. So what's your?
It's, we're used to sharing space in parks because it's.
But what I'm alluding to, that's a fixed piece of equipment for all intents and purposes. So it's now, parks are supposed to be closed at dusk, okay? We all know mommy don't make Sally come home at dusk, okay? So Sally's down there playing in the park. What, I mean, other than, you know, us having a full-time sitter, if you will, I mean, I'm concerned from a risk perspective.
Sure.
Because of the moving parts on that. And what I've read, I'm not going to get into the graphics, but it is a concern.
Absolutely. And I feel like it's kind of gets treated just like any of the other satellite equipment that you have in the equipment areas, like, I feel like it, there's always a risk, but it's never one that I've even.
Who's absorbing the risk?
Has anybody reached out to Legit about the?
I have not at this point. I did it regarding these.
What did Legit say about those?
Scott told me that he, and I had not received it as of today.
Because I mean, I could see the point of some risk involved with it, but I could also see looking at our parks, that there are other pieces of equipment that would carry similar, if not greater.
But we're not adding. And that, that, one of the things that I've read, strangulation is a very sincere risk.
And we don't want that for anyone.
Well, I would say similar.
We don't. Does somebody agree? Yeah.
I mean, there's always a risk.
I mean, there's always a risk, I don't want to deny that at all. I don't personally know of any incident, I have been around.
But who's, who is absorbing the risk?
I mean, I guess at the end of the day, we would want to donate this course to the town. So I would imagine the town would, but as far as like the maintenance and any time we can collaborate throughout the process of.
So this would become our liability?
Correct.
How many of these things are we talking about having in the park?
Potentially 36.
36 of these added to the insurance?
And we can get numbers on those as far as it relates. I mean, we can ask Legit for that information, we can ask them what the risk profile is. They insure multiple municipalities, so I'm sure we're not the only one that's looked at this.
Snow Hill would be a good reference. They have a park, the ball field at Snow Hill has a really nice disc golf course that wraps around the outside of it in a similar fashion to what Worcester County had suggested at our ballpark. The reason we thought the Kater Park itself is because being in the heart of town, it really does allow more of an interaction with the community. And that's what our hope is, we hope that our people are coming here to play, but then they're also going out and engaging with all the different opportunities there are just on the street. You can walk to them.
Also, Shoemaker, I think the space there, Shoemaker Pond in Salisbury, that park is probably smaller than the Kater. There's two tee pads and two baskets that have been there for 15 years.
And water.
Yeah, right.
And just to add on to that, these baskets from the company, at least the course quality ones, come with a 10-year warranty. This is all galvanized steel, very well-made, well, it's not coming apart. In the ground is about a five-gallon bucket size worth of concrete that the post is in. So it's not tipable like this, and this is kind of more of a portable version. But there's no big, I mean, unless a 250-pound man comes and hangs on it, it's not really going to tip over or anything in that way. I can imagine somebody getting pegged up in here, but it'd be one of those where you intentionally be doing it, not just randomly like, oh, and then you're having an issue.
Most of the risk I've observed personally was to be equipped with one person. Just kids who like to hang on it.
Injury and risk aren't planned, so let's agree on that.
100%, and if you look at the course map, one of the things that we really try to be aware of is putting these pin placements in outer areas wrapped by trees. That adds to the element of the challenge for the game. You don't want to get easy throw right at a thing, so they're always tucked into like a tree nestle or off to the side. The idea would be the person that's walked through the park for the last 15 years doesn't really notice that. We don't want to be an eyesore, we want to be an added element, if that makes sense.
So looking at your timeline a little bit here, the, it looks like the portable stage, right? You would not be leaving the equipment in the park over.
No, we would have to take it out.
Right, and that's for the month of August, correct?
Yes.
So we have a meeting, if I'm not mistaken, what is it, August 26th?
I can tell you in one second. August 9th and 23rd.
23rd. So that's the day after your first course tournament, as it's written here on this template. So it sounds like we have some questions that we should figure out risk-profile-wise on our end.
Yes, sir.
And it also, I'm sure some other questions that are going to probably bubble up over this discussion. But it sounds like you could put something temporary there, play for the day and take it home with you.
Correct.
And then come back to us on the second meeting in August, if it's approved this evening. Following your pilot phase to say this went well, this didn't go well, these are the changes we would like to see. And by that point, we should have the risk profile side figured out a little bit. And then maybe we could, maybe we could come to an agreement on a long-term plan.
Yes, sir.
Does that sound like it?
Well, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying that I will do it, I'm just saying that to keep that in the back of your mind. But go ahead, so council member, what's your?
Oh, yeah, well, I do actually, I mean, I think it's a great concept and this is a great presentation. I do have some questions, if you wouldn't mind, can I, I've never heard of disc golf before.
Yeah, of course.
So this is quite learning experience, I did go on YouTube and watch your.
You guys want to add a couple of items?
You're not that sure that already changed?
No, no.
Watch out, Arnold and Cassie.
Yeah, and as we come by, the ones that have the sharper edges are more for distance and the ones with the duller edges are more of just that landing basketball.
So I do have some questions, everyone, thank you for letting me do those. I do understand that the Park Commission approved this, but they did express some concerns. So we did talk about a little bit future maintenance and you indicated that your group will be handling that aside from what we normally do.
Correct.
More than ours.
I'm sorry?
The Parks Commission did not approve this, they approved the content.
Okay, favor the content. Non-player safety, so I'm looking here, you kind of rushed on this, but some of these I've, it looks like we've go over some paths. The existing walkway, is that?
Correct.
Okay. So what is, can you go over again what your plan is for that? Is it just to throw if somebody's walking?
Yeah, that, I mean, that, see, we interact with this in almost every one of the parks that we play in. Very rarely is there a park that doesn't already have.
Just kidding.
Yeah, that doesn't already have, you know, human traffic going through, whether it's people walking their dogs, whether it's people jogging, whether it's kids playing, all of those things are gone. So we're trained as a sport, as courtesy, to not throw ever when there's an obstacle. And then say, someone's fishing along the shore of Shoemaker, which happens all the time. Before you throw, you address the human that's playing or fishing and saying, hey, we're about to tee off, would you rather move or would you like to wait? And in the case where there's like a family and it's an impasse, we just move to the next hole and avoid the obstacle. But when, in a park where there's blind spots, there'll be signage that says you're entering an area of flying discs. And you know, it's pretty, it'll be pretty obvious, there's only like two or three places where that's necessary, where it comes around a blind corner. For the most part, you'll be able to see with your vision as a person walking or running in the park, where people are interacting. And at the most, on a tournament day, that would be when every hole is being played, that's very rare. But like on an actual like day in the park on a Saturday, you'd be lucky to see four groups out there, maybe 10 people. And they'll be so spread out, there's not a whole lot of interaction where people are crossing over each other.
So what is, what would happen, which is one of the reasons I wanted to field this, if it goes onto private property?
Absolutely, I mean, that's an obstacle that we would hope that, if you look on the edges where the private property could be concerned, we have put in suggested landscape areas, maybe marsh grasses or different kind of landscaping to kind of block those as a ball pit as an area, but for the most part, if a disc goes into someone's yard, the idea would they would go get it and then bring it back to an out-of-bounds area, like so if you cross out-of-bounds, you play from one meter where you went out of bounds. So they would walk to the yard, grab the thing and then play back on the course.
So this additional landscaping, is that?
We would fundraise for it, yeah.
Do we get charged for a tournament?
I mean, no. Can we, can we, I'm sorry, confused.
That was my next question.
If I'm going to play, I'm the, the no names from Washington, do I have to pay them at a tournament?
Yeah, there's an entry fee for amateurs, there's a standard to payout at least of what you paid into it. So that's a P D J statement. Pay-to-play is only for a tournament setting and that's a different sort of crowd. We're engaging in like a day-to-day recreational experience.
In the agenda that I outlined, one of the things that it goes through is our tag rounds. That's something that we currently do every Sunday. For that, all you have to be is a member of the club, which costs $10 a year. We mostly keep that just for record-keeping and that sort of thing. And with that, I've been running that for about two, two and a half years now. And we see so many different people that come out and Sean has referenced it, we see anywhere from 20 to 30. I think the largest event we have is about 36 people. So if you choose to get into the side of it where you just want to come out recreationally, meet people and enjoy the sport, it's very, very cheap to no cost to enter. And to be honest, like this last Sunday where we had our workday for about two and a half hours and then after had a, one of our tag rounds, we had a couple of people that were just having to be on the course and wanted to play. And we let them pick up and play at no cost because at the end of the day, that part of it's about community.
Phil, may I ask the question of our police chief, I don't mean to put him on the spot. But tournaments happening out there, I get struck in the head. What's your reaction?
You said meet, who's the meet?
The police department where they get the phone call.
The chief of police.
I would have, we gather that would be waivers, you're talking about other people utilizing the park.
Yeah.
Yeah, every event like that, we have a waiver applied.
Who administers that, you all?
Correct.
That's a standard grounds.
So there's a tournament happening at Shoemaker, this is a good test subject, we can reference the whole thing. To play the tournament, I believe it was $40 to enter. And as participant in the tournament, you get a custom-stamped disc as well as a t-shirt. So what Sean was referencing with the payout is you're basically getting something worth more than the value of the thing you're doing and you get to play in a tournament, which typically is two rounds. You play a round in the morning, then you get a gauge of where you are in the round and then they get placement of everyone gets booked with your group, where you are. You play a second round and whoever did the best, the two rounds end the tournament. Tournaments happen a lot less frequently than what we're explaining as like the casual golf, like the weekly events or the community aspect of it. And I'm certainly happy to work through whatever you guys think is best for how we handle the tournament scenario.
Then all those tournaments when you charge, who nets the proceeds?
There usually aren't any. Like, I mean, if a place this sport is, if you think of like football, when you had professionals that were working at grocery stores in the off season, that's pretty much where we're at right now. We're still growing. Like, you don't, you're not going to make a ton of money playing disc golf as a pro. I mean, our top guy, our Tiger Woods, has signed a seven-figure contract. And we're trying to grow the sport to get more people on line with that. But if you're playing this sport currently for money, you're wasting your time.
When you charge.
It's to cover the overhead for the discs and the t-shirts, whatever the event stuff that you need for that day. We're a nonprofit, we're not going to make money any of those tournaments.
So I would like to get back to council member, where is this question, if you don't mind?
I mean, that was, that was great. So then you, you got me where I was going to go, so you are a 501(c)(3)?
Correct, that's correct.
Have you gotten your final approval yet?
I just checked and it hasn't popped up yet. We're waiting.
It's filed. Not right now.
We are in the IRS, has a form, if you pop on the IRS's form right now, the first thing it says is they're about eight months behind on what they're doing, but we have all the paperwork from the state of Maryland. And we have the form that we also submitted to you guys where it says that we are. They just haven't posted us on the registry online where you can search it publicly.
And then too, you have that paper from the IRS, not a 501(c)(3).
No, no, we're.
Can't function.
We're a nonprofit organization, but we haven't filed for the exemption under 501(c)(3) as of that database. We have filed for it, we haven't gotten it.
We have to wait. So then, okay, the layout here, I, 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 I still remember myself met with some residents and I do have concerns about the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 holes up on the, by the water. So I'm just going to publicly express my concerns about those, we'll see where we end up on the whole thing. And then really my last question is, and I think it's pretty standard from attending meetings, are you in good standing with the town?
In what regard?
How, your bills and stuff, you're good, you don't owe the town any money.
So, hold on, I think that this is a common misconception. So we're here with an entity, which is eastbound disc golf. So if you're asking if eastbound disc golf is in good standing, I don't know if they do business with the town. Is that your question?
That's what I'm asking, is whoever is approaching us, are they, and they're all here, is that right?
Yeah, we're a new organization, so we're in good standing with everybody so far. I also wanted to add that when we have sanctioned tournaments, and when I say sanctioned, I mean by the Professional Disc Golf Association, we have to pay them a fee for every player that we have. And one of the things that we receive for that fee is insurance for that event. That addresses a lot of concerns.
Can I get a copy of that?
Thank you. Did you have some questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So going back to the disc for a minute, looking at the driver, the big range and the putter, can you tell me the distances those are thrown, each one of them? So the driver, how far is that throw?
Professionals can throw the driver around 400 feet. Like touring pros can throw, the world record currently is 1,142.
I can't get much more than 200.
I see more of the sport though, is you have drivers that even older players that are just starting can still throw them about 250 feet.
Okay, Shoemaker Park, I'm not familiar with Shoemaker Park, basically, has that installed for you?
Correct.
And where is exactly?
Shoemaker Pond, right next to the award museum.
Okay. All right, and that's where the course is.
Yes, sir.
And that's an 18-hole course?
It's 36 holes, 36, so the two tee pads, so it could be played like four courses.
Okay. So you, you want to hold these tournaments, I think you're mentioning one on August 22nd, which is a Sunday. Saturdays and Sundays are times very busy in the park. There's a lot of people. How do you propose to have, you said 36 potential teams of people waiting to play? And two people per hole, that's a lot of disc being thrown around when people are trying to.
That's the whole idea of the course design, is to be throwing into places where people aren't engaging. And I spend a lot of time in the park myself personally, so I, when I help walk through the scores and we laid it out, we tried to make it so the holes are in places where it's not. The main area that, what you're talking about, is very busy, are the tennis courts and the playground. So our course layout navigates around that, so if they're not really interacting with each other, there would be crossover at the pavilion. And I guess our suggestion would be the same thing we do with the park in Salisbury, is anytime that we're having an event, we give the, like Homero County a heads-up and say, hey, on August 15th, we'd like to throw an event, could we rent the pavilion? And they let us know if someone else has already booked it or not, whether it's convenient and we work out so that we can be spatially aligned with everyone.
And we have similar procedures, just to remind everyone.
But typically every, every weekend whose birthday is group gatherings at those pavilions that people.
It would be a group concept, really. I mean, it'll, if this park were to go in long-term, that would happen, you know, three, four, five times a year, at least on bigger tournaments. So I, if there are going to be hazards and dangers, everyone will know about them upfront. And those initial, like that, those events that we were talking about, as a club, we'll be ready to, we know it's not just another, you know, typical event. We're there, it's our first time, we're trying to feel the course out, make sure it's safe. So we'll have that in mind.
And what no one else has said yet is during our tournaments, we have volunteers that come and we call it their spotters. So if there's typically four areas that are very dangerous walking path, we would have somebody called a spotter that actually sits there and lets the people on the tee pad know, do not throw, there's people walking this way right now. And those are people that we always have, we always have volunteers for every tournament that try to help out with that and with scheduling and, you know, stuff like that. So that is something that we do do for tournaments.
Perfect example, last weekend, we did our cleanup day at the park. The pavilion was booked for a funeral service at Shoemaker, so we weren't able to use the pavilion and we just set up a pop-up tent off in the distance where we weren't bothering anyone and we're able to go out there and clean up all the vines and take out the poison weed.
And don't misunderstand me, I'm all for disc golf, I truly am.
Yes, sir.
I know the sport, I know the sport. But looking at your course layout, this truly dominates the park. And there's really no room for, you know, expansion of other things we may want to do with that park. Like you've taken both sides of the park, the nature pond, you know, if there's disc flying over the pond, they could get trapped in the pond, there's always people walking around that. I see that as a real problem, utilizing that side. Suppose we wanted to put a small skate park over there, we would be able to do it.
So one thing that Austin had said earlier is it is semi-permanent. These baskets are, you could take them out in 30 minutes if you really wanted to.
Do you want to have an 18-hole course?
No, I understand that, I understand.
Yeah, and our goal is to be cohesive with everyone involved. And I, I mean, I've thought about these functions and I'm in support of the skate park as well, but maybe we work out, you know, the logistics, as we said, but the best right now is what we've written on paper is a proof of concept for all it is. What we would like to do is have the opportunity to bring temporary baskets out there and find out what that actual concept looks like in reality. And then if we have to make adjustments and move around it, we're all for it. And if there's a way that we can coexist with a skate park, let's do it. And that's how we feel about it.
What I'm saying to you is I'd rather, I'd rather see a final plan because the one I'm seeing here potentially interferes with the private property, interferes with the nature pond, and it interferes with a lot of general public's activities there. So that's the problem, this location.
It's interesting to hear that because I feel like the time that I spend in that park, it's a little bit underutilized and I made a good impact of being able to go there on busy Saturdays, busy Sundays. I go after work in the evenings and I see a park that needs a resurgence. I see a park that needs more activity. And I do understand where you could see from the lines that are drawn on paper, it looks like we've taken over the park, but in reality, we're hiding 36 pins inside of a park where tee pads you won't even know off to the side. And if there's 10 people playing there, you wouldn't notice. Just like you wouldn't notice if there's 10 people walking around the path. We want to be low-impact and we want to be coexisting with the community and we're happy to ebb and flow in any direction that is.
You also mentioned that, I guess, when you have tournament play, everybody signs a waiver and that waiver protects your organization against, you know, sued by a participant.
Our partnership, really, I guess, is how we come up with our partnership agreement. And that's the example that we have, if you flip a bit further through, is the one that we have in Kinder Park, which is with Rundle County. So we can kind of guideline what, who is protected by those different things. And like you said, if we're going to go through the process of looking to get this put on the insurance policy portion of the thing, it'd be really nice to know what that restrictions are, what they're requiring for that, so we can, you know, I think a simpler solution is we could be provided from the town of Berlins, a blur to add to that waiver and just make that standard.
Again, that's for your players. If Jeff's walking in that park and he gets hit in the head by a disc, that doesn't cover it.
Can I ask maybe an obvious question, but, I mean, I've played a lot of sports at the park. I played soccer, I, when we have volleyball courts, I did that. And the thing is, is that what's the difference between somebody getting hit with a disc versus getting hit with my soccer ball or a tennis ball or something like that? I'm just trying to understand.
First thing they're going to do is call their board.
Well, I mean, I'm not disputing that, but I'm wondering how it's different than me playing soccer or something else.
Well, we're not having soccer tournaments at the park.
I'm not disputing that, I'm just asking a question, I don't have to answer.
I guess apprehension's a liability, I would, I would like to work through that.
I see two major liabilities, I do, again, great, I think it's, I understand why, I believe I understand why the focus on the Kinder Park, not another piece of real estate. And personally, personally, I like the idea of this being in the Kinder Park because of the visibility. It'd be very helpful.
We call that as well.
Okay? What I don't like about it is the fact, to refer back to those two council members down there, a lot of activity, maybe you've been there, I've been down there working with FinTAC, I've been down there with nobody.
Correct.
But reality on something is, that concerns me from a young child's perspective more than the disc. Just telling you, the research that I've done, that concern.
I have a 3-0 daughter and I have one of these, I have a bigger one. I just, I understand, trust me, I hear you. And I would also add, I, when I. And I would also add, I, when I, we spoke to the Parks Commission, I would like this to be the first of several disc golf projects in the area. So I don't wanna start on the back of the year, I don't want to.
And I, I mean, the other thing is, is that, I, I mean, I have a 2-year-old, so I spend a lot of time in our parks too. And from what I see, I mean, I have seen times where we have some peak demand at parks, don't get me wrong. But largely, I, I think I would have to agree with Austin, that we're suffering from maybe another problem, which is not enough people using our parks. So if we can find innovative ways, whether it's skate park, whether it's disc golf, whatever it may be, to get people in, outdoors and together, I think that's what the community's about. So, I don't know what direction this project could take, but kudos on at least coming forward on it.
If I may add, as we had spoke about yesterday in Salisbury, I think three of us seen a father and son out there playing with basically can lids, it's a wrong term, but very rudimentary frisbees. And we approached them, and we're like, hey, you're, you're using, you know, very weak equipment, here's two free discs, you know, have fun. We're all about trying to grow the sport, but also help out the community. We're very giving, I mean, we, we're, none of us are here for profit, we're all just trying to find another place for us to have fun and, and bring other people to have fun with us.
We actually lose money.
Yeah.
Do we have any other questions from the council?
Could I make a recommendation? Rather than give any kind of approval tonight, give them permission to set up a temporary setup that we can go take a look at.
I think at the same time, if you're taking the Shoemaker Park, because I've been there and I've seen it, and it looks like it's working pretty well now that there's hardly anybody ever there. I would imagine, if you saw Shoemaker Park in this format, it would just look like white ponies everywhere.
Yeah, I've, I've never seen them play out there, but I've seen them, I've seen the discs, anything else.
Shoemaker Park is a very busy park. As far as disc golf is concerned, it's very tight, it's, there's not a whole lot of space, it's very, just kind of back and forth, you go this way and then come back this way. We generally work pretty well with the public there. There's a couple holes right by the water where you get fishermen and people that are, you know, having a picnic on the beach, we work around that. I don't foresee the same scale of issues at this park, but that's, I, I haven't spent the amount of time that Austin has at the park.
So during, okay, go ahead, Jim.
Public works will help, whatever the mayor and council determine appropriate. One of the things, though, with my daily duties and daily, the pads, the pad is probably, it'll be bigger than that table. That table's probably a 4x10 table, and they're looking at 6x12, so that's, with our daily duties, these pads and that 18 of them, it's gonna take three to four, maybe even five weeks, at our time, if we were to determine to put these in. And I'm not saying no, I'm just saying that their timetable to have these done is make, is not gonna be able to, I just wanna express that.
Is there a way to do a less, less of a scaled project as far as the pads to start?
Yeah, that was the, that was the idea of putting the little golf tees in the front, and just kinda have like a natural teapot, to where, you know, here's your, here's your teapot, you have to throw in front of this line.
And we could work up to something.
Right, and then we can build up and put a, put a teapot or two in a week, and then as it gets, you know...
It would probably be a teapot or two every couple weeks, I would think. I mean, we've got a lot of demand on our public works.
At 6x12, it would be like, once a week, yeah, we would probably be able to attack that project.
Now, I know the, the club up in Delaware, Delaware Disc Golf, they just revamped their teapads at Iron Hill, which is a public park as well. Granted, that is more in the woods, away from, I think mountain biking is their only real concern with the public, but they had, I wanna say it was nine or 10 volunteers, and they were able to put in two teapads similar to what our design is within five, six hours. Not to say, but I'm just saying, like, with the right know-how and already having done it before, it makes it a little bit easier. I'm sure the first couple, it's gonna be like, alright, a little learning, but once you get kind of in the groove of things, it just kinda, you know, throw it in.
Now, before we get to teapads, I think Councilmember Herrera had a, a pretty good question. Are you looking to see something like this set up, and like, see people throwing it? What are you trying to do?
Well, I wanna see this set up on a temporary basis, not give them, not pass a motion tonight. We'll go take a look at it, and sh, if we have time. Maybe they'll do a demonstration.
What about, what about approving the preliminary stuff here for August? Because we could get a sense, you're looking at approximately 25 people for the first, 30 people for the 10th, and then a larger event, so we could get to see what that would look like on the 22nd. And then we could come back and say, hey, this is not what we really expected, or this is a couple modifications that we would like to see, and it doesn't box us in there.
Mayor, one, one thing I'd like to note, and the Parks Commission discussed this, and it's in the memo that they were, this course has areas that are very much on private property. I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's a draw, but that's a concern, we wouldn't want to have even a temporary course set up that actually goes on to other properties. So this course, as it is here, is not really usable in some of the perimeter areas.
So, looking at this course that we have in front of us, this is on?
Some of it is on private property.
I don't think it is, based on the new revision.
Right, right behind the tennis courts, that area is on private property.
No, there's, there's stakes on the ground where you can see that you guys surveyed that property, and we say it on as lines.
The tree line represents the property line.
Okay.
And that crosses the, the tree line. I, it's just, it's something that would have to be clearly delineated where those property lines are.
Certainly, we can make sure you're on private property.
Yeah, we're not trying to take anyone's private property.
And, and I mean, if we're off a little bit here, that's why we would have a pilot phase to adjust, I would think, right?
Yeah, and that's the whole idea, was to get out there and see what frisbees look like throwing to this park, and if we need to make adjustments so that everyone's safety is in good standing, that's what we want.
Yeah, if this were to be made long-term, it might look completely different.
One thing to add, as far as demonstration for, for the council members, the baskets that we were using for temporary baskets, very portable, it's something that we definitely could not leave out there unsupervised for, for hours. So, I mean, we, we could definitely work with you guys, as far as the schedule of when we could set it up, you know, for a five-hour window or something, and then, you know...
So, and this question's for David Gaskell, for those of you that may not know, our town attorney. Would it be possible to approve this more as like a three-day event for park use? And maybe they would have to work with Mary to fill out the appropriate forms for that, but for the first, 10th, and 22nd, rather than approving the whole project, we'd be approving a park event?
You could do that.
That would then have you coming back at the second meeting in August to discuss the idea of a, of a more permanent project, like what you have in front of us.
I think that's very feasible for us.
Yeah, that sounds very, very...
Well, it's not up to me, it's up to the council.
As many members of the council would want to come out and say, yeah.
I can't make a motion.
Did you, just curiosity, and Mike, maybe you know, but, did you guys explore any other piece of real estate?
That's correct. We explored, I explored three with a potential fourth. The three that we looked at were Tyson's Plant, which had some wetland, waterish areas around the outside, or possible, without having the path there, that it would be a larger project to accomplish without having any of the existing infrastructure of the benches or whatever. We tried to utilize a large portion of using the walking path, so that the course actually looked, the infrastructure was there, I guess, is my point. And it being off to the, I guess, Route 50 side of town, our, our concern when people would come, utilize the disc golf course, and then leave without engaging the, the community aspect, which is what we really wanna involve. And then the other portion that we looked at was through Worcester County, and that was the ball fields around the outside, which with the 113 access, my also concern was, people would come there as a, as a destination, but they wouldn't enjoy all the purveyesses of the, the town. And I guess when we looked at Stephen Kater Park itself, we, we got into that village and we realized that it's like right there in the community. And people for all of the events and the parades and different things are utilizing those parking lots, and they're such easy access, it just felt like it was a really good fit for us being able to be a part and maybe growing the sport through the community.
The intent was to, yeah, like you said, grow the community, and, you know, there's a smaller group of us, and we want to grow into several courses in the area, and we don't particularly wanna do all that on our own, we wanna grow the disc golf community, have them take a vested interest, and have that grow on itself. The Kater did seem like the easiest installation, because like the Tyson's Plant site, they're viable sites, but they're gonna take a lot of work and resurfacing to get...
Yes, you were presenting that to me today, I'd say, sure, 100%.
Yeah, we would also need to raise closer to like $100,000 worth of the 30 we're trying to get right now to make this work as a donation to you.
So if we, if, if the council goes ahead with the motion for these three events as a park use motion, don't they have to fill out? Look, they'll work with Mary to do that.
Yeah, there's, I mean, the paperwork side of stuff, we can get done, don't you agree, Mary?
Totally.
Yeah, I mean, we, we can work through the paperwork side, the other thing that I would say is that we probably need to, to cover some of the liability concerns, I would say, to figure out with legit, what type of disclaimer may need to be added to their form for everybody that's gonna participate. Do you agree, Gaskell?
Yes, sir.
To help make sure that we carve out that liability for the town.
Mayor, I have, again, I have no idea, from a liability insurance perspective, what the cost will be, if I would remind the council that FY '22 is either way. And so there's, there was nothing budgeted for this?
Correct.
I can, I can offer, I, I moved here from across the bridge, and I was very heavily involved there, and, and in Rundle County. We got a seven-figure insurance policy just for our club for $250 a year, and I'm not saying to hold us to it, but I'm just...
I have no idea what it is.
Yeah, we didn't.
And, and what we'll do is, if the council approves the three-day event, it would, of course, be contingent on that, that liability. Because if we get a higher figure, and it's outside of what we can swing for a three-day event, or what you could donate for a three-day event, then it's gonna be cost prohibitive. But if we're talking about 100 bucks here or there, I mean, I think we could make that work. So, I could, I can see this pulling now.
Is it one three-day event, or three separate?
It's, it would be for, it would be for August 8, or August 1st, August 10th, and August 22nd, is how I see this going.
Correct.
Yes.
It's on, we do, it's a three separate.
Yes, sir.
And I think by the time you get to the end of that, we'll know if we like it or we don't.
And it gives the council three days, and staff three days to get out there and take a look at it, as opposed to asking them to set up and make one-time fit. I mean, we get to see this in action.
I'd love to have you guys participate.
I don't know if you really want that.
Yeah. I'm a little bit of a ball golfer, so...
I, I don't know how my colleagues feel, but like I said, if you could stay away from that water area personally, that would, that would be great. That's not part of my motion, that's just...
Well, are you making a... More so than water, you also have the roadway, so, again, we see it on here, but we have no idea how close they are to the highway, or to Tripoli Street. We just can't comprehend it by looking at, at this. So you would need to go ahead and have eyes before they do anything, have them put it down, look at it, and then move forward. We have the ability, staff-wise, to go out and see something. So it's not like you have to have a tournament and then say, let's make a decision. When we talk about parking, we spoke on that, how many people are gonna be to each event? Parking always has to be, you know, addressed beforehand. You can't say, well, we didn't tell them where to park, just figure it out. So, they have tournaments, lacrosse tournaments in town all the time, they have the staff, which they will. But you have to have people paid on-site, paid people, to make sure they park where they're supposed to. When you look at the Worcester Fields, they pay us two times, two options to be out there the whole time. So we have to understand the scope, if it's small, then it's not issue. Shoemaker's 11 acres, how big is the park? So understand size, dynamics, and of course, it's not 11 acres of open space.
Correct.
So, again, first thing we need to say is, you need to be able to utilize the space, but you need to utilize it in smart times.
Yes, sir.
Ball is the best time, we do things when you don't have a whole bunch of people here. You don't wanna bring in a whole bunch of people and say, we need people to come to town, when the people are already here. What you need to do is go ahead and say, other times, we need to take tournaments, correctly. We would never have an event without having over, and again, Bobby does enough of them, six months planned, so to come back and say, within 30 days, if I have an event, if this is considered an event or a tournament, you just need timing. If it's not on the actual event schedule, you need to go ahead and watch that also.
And the other thing is, is that I think looking at this, is this, when I see 25 people at your group, right? And when I see 30 people, is that your group?
Yeah.
And when I see 72 people, who is that?
Opening up to the broader audience.
That would be, the 72 would probably be pulling people from Northern Virginia and Delaware.
Like, for instance, our weekly at Shoemaker is the 25 to 30 range, which we've mentioned, but we have a tournament that's coming up in two weeks that we just cleaned up for, and 70 people have signed up for it. And that's a one day, it'll be done by, you know, starting nine morning, done by four in the afternoon, and we're out of there. The park's cleaner than we started, that's just how we are as a group.
And the most we're allowed is 90, you're not allowed any more than five people per hole, so no tournament would ever have more than 90 people at your park at a time.
But I mean, even then, well, if you never see all the five people, that's if, that's if we had too many people, but typically, 72 would be the absolute max, that someone's starting on every hole and force them, and the course is played, and we're done.
Chief is right, couldn't handle 72 cars there, couldn't handle...
No, there's not enough, but you would...
Nobody's suggesting that.
No, but two of these days, two of these days are on Sundays, and of course, one's scheduled through the morning, and of course, Sunday is farmer's market. We do at 10 o'clock. A lot of people park down there for farmer's market.
My concern also is for these particular dates, if the pavilion is already rented, which it likely is, how do we then want to handle that?
As far, as far as our end in the pavilion, where we, I mean, this space right here is fine for us, we just, hey, this is where you're going.
The pavilion is reserved, it's, it's reserved for those people a whole night.
No, right, and we, as far as, as far as we're concerned, we wouldn't need that, it's just more of a luxury of having somewhere to sit.
Oh, 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 I can't, there's too many conversations, one at a time if we can't leave. So, I think Mary and...
If you were, if you were, say, just to set up a table in the parking lot, that would be wonderful.
Right, yes, yeah, yeah.
Because I would imagine that the pavilion is already rented for these dates.
Sure.
And if, if I may pursuant to the dates, the first two dates were only chosen because those are events that we already do. So, for example, 8/1 was picking, was chosen as a Sunday morning tag round, because I already organize Sunday morning tag rounds every Sunday across different parks. What I've been doing for about two and a half years is, I'll organize it between Shoemaker, Trap Pond, and Snow Hill, and I move people around to utilize all these different courses. And allows people to engage with different parks, engage with different areas, and should this park be approved, and should this project be approved, I would be moving those people to come out to that event, to utilize their opinions, their play, and everything like that, to gather any kind of feedback we can for the park. So while I have said, at 10 a.m. on Sunday, I can move that, that was, that was only put out there because that's already a time where my players and my club members are already used to showing up somewhere to play around a disc golf with all of our friends, you know, for lack of a better term. Same thing goes for the proposed 8/10 on Wednesday. We gather currently at Shoemaker Ponds at 6 p.m. on Wednesdays, and we have for the past, I believe it's been a 14-week season so far. We would work it into that schedule, so that it's right along the ways of things they were already doing. So these are people that are experienced in playing disc golf in a park, and in other parks, that already have a lot of attendance, that is not just a disc golf attendee, can work around it. Now, the projected XC three as listed for the twenty-second, that is tentative and can be moved as needed. Seventy-two person, as we referenced, is the maximum capacity that tournament could hold, it's not saying that that is what it will have, but it could. If we felt comfortable after those two events, both as, as the town and as a club, that we could host that successfully, then we could have a full-scale proof of concept, just to see how it works for, for both entities. We really just want to see how this concept could grow in time, and this, I feel that this blueprint, dates being able to move around, will give us a way of slowly working into it and addressing any issues before they're already true, or many true safety concerns.
Hold on, hold on a second, I'd like to recognize the councilwoman Nichols is trying to get a question in the moment again.
No question. I mean, my, my statement was, we don't necessarily need a pavilion, we could move to a space in parks a lot, which, I mean, that's not a major issue.
I want to come back to Mr. Gaskell for a second. I mean, again, I ask you to think this through long-term and short-term, the long-term and the short-term. Again, for what it's worth, you've got a group of presenters here that I think have done a great job, but the organization in itself right now is not an official five-oh-one C three organization.
And your concern with that is what?
It's been practice of this council for forever. I mean, I, I've got a solution for the interim, I do. That way you keep in, with the same practice, and I would encourage, you're local, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I mean, my suggestion would be to partner with a five-oh-one C three.
My question is, in what regard do we, even though we are, and we're filing, and we're waiting for the IRS to back up, why would in any shape, way, or form, would we need to be any more than a nonprofit organization? The five-oh-one C three is just how we file our taxes at the end of the year, and my question to you guys is, we're looking as a group, if I am Burley Oak and I want to donate.
I don't need to ask for it anymore.
Yeah.
Well, no, I mean, the thing is.
Why, why would we need that?
I think that when we're looking at for the use of, I missed that part, but I think when we're looking at for the use, sometimes there's a use granted to five-oh-one C threes or people that are not for profit. However, I would say that there's also been the cases where equipment or supplies have been given to the town by for-profit entities, and it's a gift of equipment or infrastructure for our parks, there is a precedent for them.
I guess what we want to be in compliance is, as soon as the five-oh-one C three, you know, we were fighting to get it forward before this meeting as well, and we wish we could have had it, but in the interim, I guess my point is, even if we were a for-profit, let's say we were, you know, The Globe, or Burley Oak, or The Atlantic Hotel, and we wanted to donate something to the park, would they be required to show five-oh-one C three status to be able to have this conversation?
The difference is, you're making money.
But the difference is, when you have these tournaments and you're charging people a fee to get into it, that's, that's the issue. Where the fee is just to cover the. As Mr. Fleetwood said, it's always been, it's always been the council's prerogative, and if Dean Varell's here, he's telling it, he doesn't want anybody using these parks who's making money.
Now, I think.
Dean says that a hundred times.
We are, we're nonprofits.
Yeah, so one question I have is, the money that I thought I heard was your membership dues, that's on your end, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Does that actually take, you do that before you get to the park?
Yes.
That's all on.
Yes.
That is just to be a member of Eastbound Disc Golf.
That's once a year.
She'll charge forty dollars, charge forty bucks, everybody has a great time, get their outback.
And the forty dollars are what we use to fund that debt. We're not making money. Buy the T-shirts and the discs and the things that you get. It's not, we're not, we're not looking to pay money.
Real quick, that forty dollars, say if you're an amateur player, it's the standard to, you are compensated in merchandise to at least that amount or above, and if you compete well, then you win additional merchandise. As an amateur player, you'd win more frisbees. As a professional player, you can only win the pool that is within that. So everybody paying the forty dollars, there's ten professional players, they're, you know, paying out the top three out of those ten, so it'd be like one fifty, one hundred fifty, you know, going down the list. Those events, I, I understand that, that flow of money, but I just want to reemphasize, because I learned this myself when I was working with Kinder Farm, we, we are a nonprofit organization, and I know that, that five-oh-one C three is kind of what everybody designates as being a nonprofit organization, that just means that you don't pay taxes, but there are tons of nonprofit organizations that are not five-oh-one C three.
And the other thing is that, and maybe I'm confused on this part, if, if they install these facets, it does not give them the right to have tournaments whenever they want, they would still have to be approved by the council.
Right, well, we're going to have to.
We're really talking.
Some type of written agreement, like the Anarona County one, is an example or sample that they provide.
See, that's more like a long-term agreement, if and when we decide it's a good idea. Personally, I'd, I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and implement what we've got here with the twenty-five, thirty, and seventy-two persons for the three tournaments, and that we'd like to use the park. I think you definitely need to work towards the five-oh-one C three, I think you need to do any kind of accounting to show us you didn't make any money, and it was all given back, and I think you need to provide proper insurance that covers us liability wise.
Yes, sir.
Is that, is that your motion?
So I have a motion by councilmember Purnell to approve three different dates for a park event for Eastbound Disc Golf, and we'll make sure that the, make sure I summarize this correctly, make sure that the paperwork's completed appropriately to apply for those three separate event uses of the park, that there is no for-profit money taking place, and that there is adequate liability insurance to protect the town for August first, tenth, and twenty-second.
Did I summarize it well?
All right.
I'll say.
And I have a second by councilmember Oris, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
So I have councilmember Nichols, Purnell, and Oris in favor, and councilmember Ner opposed, and councilmember Varell absent. Your motion, or the motion passes, and I hope that we get to see you back again on August twenty-third with a favorable report.
I just want to make sure I'm clear, it's all contingent upon Troy's stipulations, correct?
Correct.
So those things need to be in place before this August first.
Correct.
If I present it right here, so if I'm not here before then, then this is not happening.
No, so they'll file, they'll file the paperwork with Mary.
Right.
And then the insurance stuff will be cleared by Gaskell, will also get the.
I was, I was thinking the insurance for these things were happening by this test.
But you're going to ensure that it's adequate to cover the town.
But those things need to be here and before we start, before they start any of these things, all of these things.
At town hall or before the mayor council?
No, they need to be here at town hall and approved, or as, making sure that they're adequate before this August first, correct?
They would be, we could attach them to the, to the reservation forms, yes.
That's what I'm saying, like the, the insurance and whatever else, that can't happen after August first, you're saying it needs to be.
We coordinate with your office for insurance. You can just send it to Mr. Fleetwood, he'll send it.
Well, I mean, with a dollar amount. I'll, I'll, I defer on that till I have another conversation like that.
And Jeff, will it be any increase to our insurance?
Not if we're, if we're placing the cost on these folks, no. For this, for this three-day event.
I know that, I just have a logistical question, I know they're not using, it wouldn't be the pavilion, but say we already had the park rented out for someone who was estimating forty people for a birthday party, would that, I mean, do we need to come back to you guys, I guess, with dates?
I think you set up a tent, pretend a little pop-up.
I just worry about parking, that's my only, like, if they had the larger.
I could also suggest that the group park elsewhere, if that would make things better.
Okay.
Yeah, that the larger lots within walking distance, and that's a big appeal for this whole scenario, is we need to utilize the other spaces within there.
I just wanted to ask, because if they, you know, we look at the calendar and the party events, I just want to see what you want to.
If there's, how about this, you look at the calendar, see if those three days are taken, if not, then let them know, so that maybe they can reserve them.
Yeah, we would love that.
Customer service says a park reservation, so we'll talk with them, but I just wanted to be clear, so I can tell them what they need to do.
All right, well, we appreciate it, this was very interesting, and we hope to see more others.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I have, I have one more thing to say, just thank you all for everything, I appreciate your time, but I would like to say that there are these disc golf courses in tens of thousands of parks all over the country, so thousands of groups have come in front of thousands of members like this, presenting this exact same concept, and it's been approved all over the country. We all know that Eastern Shore sometimes is a little bit behind the rest of the world, but if you go to any major city or any other place. I've been in my whole life, I'm just, I've fallen around my whole life. I'm just saying, I'm just saying, if you go, if you go over to Baltimore, you go to California, Golden Gate Park, they all have these huge disc golf parks, it's, it's amazing what you see when you go to another, another city.
And I hope one day we're sitting here having a conversation about how we've improved the park, if that's what we want to do, is make it better and not, not.
If you're interested, there's a documentary called Golden State of Mind, speaking of Golden State Park, and it really shows the effect this sport can have on those few rights in the area.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Give you a moment to get that. All right, agenda item number three is the Parks Commission motion, so we'll start with three A, motion twenty-twenty-one dash fourteen, apply twenty-twenty-three annual parks program for development, and I believe, Mary, you're running point on this, right?
And, and I'll apologize to begin with, so community parks and playgrounds and program of open space is, is one of the more convoluted grant programs to understand. So I hope you've had a chance to read through everything that I provided, the long and short of it is, typically Worcester County asks us for a plan for development, they have not done so for several years, and I think a combination of things, with COVID threw a lot of things off, but at any rate, the plan for development, whether it's to be submitted to the county or not, is still a useful tool for the town and the Parks Commission to look at projects that they would like to see done, and so you can think of it as sort of a long-term capital improvement plan for the parks. So what I have included in your packet is an example of the last plan that we submitted, which is headed up FY twenty, FY twenty twenty. I've crossed off the Stephen DeCater Park restroom project, because that is the grant application that we have in place at the moment. It is looking favorable for approval until we actually have the paper in hand that says it's approved, we don't count on that, but it is looking very favorable. So having done that, we then redeveloped the, the, the plan for development, this would be for FY twenty-three. It's headed up by the basketball court lighting project at Henry Park, which has been a priority project for quite some time. We have applied for grant funds in the past, but not received them, so the plan would be to apply this year for that project, that grant application is due in August. We would then move the Burbage Park ping pong park into the second, second slot, and any application that we made for grant funding would be leveraged against the funds that Tony made in the We Heart Berlin project is currently working on. Then what the Parks Commission thought would be the wisest course of action, rather than trying to jump right into building a skate park, would be to formulate a study, which would look at various locations, both in town and in the immediate area, and try to figure out what the, the best location for a skate park would be, rather than just trying to kind of say, well, we have some space here, let's throw one in there, we would, we would actually hire professionals to really look at it and make the determination what the best plan would be. And then the last item would be to include inclusive playground components in our existing playgrounds. The existing playground equipment has some inclusive features, but the pieces as a whole are not considered inclusive. And by inclusive, basically that means that children of varying physical abilities would be able to access the various areas of the equipment, as well as other abilities or limitations of abilities would, would get various parts of the equipment that would be stimulating, I'm trying to think of the right word, but sense, sense, tensile things, adhering, and that sort of thing. So what we're looking for tonight is your approval on this development plan as it is submitted, this would kind of be our plan for the next few years going forward, and help us determine in what direction we want to go with community parks and playgrounds grant applications.
What did you mean about skate park study and surrounding areas, what exactly is that?
Well, for instance, they could incorporate the county athletic fields as an area to look at as to the feasibility of, of possibly putting a skate park. That's actually outside of town limits, but it's something that if we asked a professional to come in and examine the whole area right in and around the town, they could certainly consider.
Now, I did have a conversation with, briefly with Mary about the timelines for the application for the grant, and I believe it's not due until August twenty-sixth. So we have a little bit of time, the, the one thing is, is we have applied for the basketball lighting in the past.
Yes.
And it's been unsuccessful. What I would, and that grant application is prepared, right? Like, we could submit that.
Yes, it just needs to be updated, Tim has actually already gotten updated dollar amounts to incorporate into the, into the.
And I had some conversations with Mike also, who's the, the chair of the Parks Commission. If you go out and you take a look at our playground equipment, it is, I believe, in the latter part of its life expectancy.
Some of it, it is varying ages.
And some of that equipment I played on as a kid, and the, the thing is, is that when you look at the use, I, I do know of some families that, that travel outside of town limits to be able to go play at other playgrounds, because ours is actually inferior to some of our, our neighboring municipalities or associations. And what I would like to ask the council to do is consider maybe giving us two weeks to take a look at some other possible options, whether that's additional playground equipment, something like a splash pad, something that we can add to our parks, that could be something that is easier for this grant to fund, and then maybe we look at some other grants to be able to fund some lighting at the basketball courts. And it's just an idea.
Do they ever say why they deny it?
It varies from year to year, it depends on how much funding they have, they, they like to do pretty new projects versus enhancements to existing. Every time I've asked for, you know, whether or not the application itself was a problem, and every time I've been told, no, it's not the application, it's just there were other projects that rated higher. And that's, and that's how grant applications go.
Similarly, I think we were denied once for the restrooms, and then we've reapplied, we've reapplied and we're hoping to be successful, so the fact that we've been unsuccessful in the past is not indicative to the fact that we would be unsuccessful with this application.
That's correct.
And we have one that is prepared, we have a couple weeks where we could maybe look at some other options, and if nothing comes to the surface, then we would say, let's submit the, the grant that we have that's prepared, but maybe we could explore some other options as well.
You would need to give some direction on what options you want to look at. Are we talking about taking a town existing piece and replacing it? Are we talking about developing an entire new site? I mean, putting a piece of playground equipment in is, is not, it's not as simple, it's just kind of plumping it down the middle.
It's not as simple as a keypad.
Right, exactly.
But I.
So you would need some guidance.
But I think one of the things that I see, I mean, I'm in our parks pretty frequently with the little guys, and one thing that I see is that our equipment is so fragmented, that if you have children of different age levels, you're really playing over here for a moment, and then you have to come back over to another spot. It's not totally suitable for children to play together in a family unit, so I would say that if we're going to look at something, maybe look at something that's together all-in-one. I did see some examples at MML when we were there, that I'd be happy to share with the council. And then there's also the opportunities for something called splash pads, I don't know if anybody's familiar with those.
Yes.
But there are water features that help, help children be able to play and cool off in the hot days, and they're, they're pretty interesting, so.
I think the chair.
Go ahead.
Mayor, just one thing as far as the playground equipment, I just received a phone call this morning, had a conversation with a mother of three that uses the parks a lot, and she and a friend of hers that has one son, they, on to some funding, I don't, I don't have any details, I told her I'd like to, you know, meet them in person, but apparently it's nothing to do with open space or anything like that, and that would be something that would free up money, you know, that would have been used for the playground equipment, if it is available, like I say, this is way far off, but I've got to get more information, but I did receive that call.
And the other nice part is, is that in our FY twenty-two budget, there is five thousand dollars for us to be, be able to bring on some of the abilities of a contractual grant writer, so I understand that the people, and Mary runs point on this grant, that if there's some portion that would need to be offloaded to a contractual grant writer, we do have that ability also.
I, I would say though, that what, what you were speaking to is far as the pieces of the playground equipment being separated, that, that, that's a much bigger project, rather than replacing a single piece of playground equipment or adding a single new piece. Rearranging the layout of the playground equipment in the park is a, is a huge project, and not something that I would suggest we try to figure out if we can do in the next two weeks. That's, that's a big, big undertaking.
So Mr. Mary, make sure I understand what you're asking, you want us to, you're asking the council to hold off on this for two weeks?
For two weeks.
So this will come back the next council meeting?
With a better idea of what we could possibly do, so.
Just want to make sure I understand what you're asking.
That's exactly what I'm asking, is that you give us two weeks to see what we can come up with, we have the project, we have the Parks Commission's approval recommendation that we pursue the project, being Henry Park lighting for the basketball courts, the grant's pretty, pretty well-written to go and be submitted, so give us two weeks to explore what options could possibly be another project that we could submit, and if we determine that, hey, look, nothing, nothing's come to the surface, or nothing really reaches the level that we would like to submit, there's nothing that prevents us from saying, let's go forward with Henry Park lighting.
I just want to make sure that everyone who's listening knows, I mean, we're not saying. I mean, we're not saying no to the lighting.
No.
We're not doing that at all.
This has been yours.
Yeah, it's been an idea for-
And the other thing is, is that we're not saying, if we were to go with a different project, right, we would not be saying no to lighting. We would just be saying that maybe that's not the best grant to submit for lighting. And maybe we want to explore another grant for lighting. Or reprioritize. That has been done also by the council in the past to reprioritize projects.
So Mary, does that set you back in any way?
I need a lot more guidance of what you're asking me to look at in the next two weeks.
So let's say-
Two weeks. I'm asking for two weeks before Agenda Item Number 3A is back on our agenda.
So let's say Zach had a new idea and said, hey, we want to pursue this. How much time do you need to prepare a whole grant?
It's hard to say. It depends on the grant. It's almost impossible to say that without knowing what grant you're talking about. Community parks and playgrounds, I'm very familiar with. As the mayor said, I already basically have that application written. I don't know what other grant programs we're talking about. So I don't know what they're requiring us to do.
Can we, yes.
Hi.
We know each other, but stand up name and property address, please.
I'm Donna Hollinger. I live at 345 Wantahill Drive. My husband and I have been residents for 10 years. We have two eight-year-old sons that are at Buckingham. And one is a typical child and one has disabilities. And I just wanted to suggest, maybe in the next two weeks, that you take an opportunity to go to Henry S. Parker Complex in Salisbury. Wacomiko County has just built an all-inclusive playground there. They were able to secure funding from many different organizations. And they were also able to build Field Seven and a Half for children with disabilities. But it's a great, all-inclusive playground. A lot of children have been using it throughout the baseball season. But it does really give you an idea of what the different playground equipment looks like. And I believe that you could purchase different pieces and not have to purchase all of the equipment at one time.
Thank you for sharing, Ms. Hollinger. Also, I think it's important, we talk a lot about the children and they have disabilities, but I also have friends that have disabilities that have children. And how do you go and play with your child if some of the equipment's a little bit more difficult to access?
Yes.
Very important point. Thank you.
So Mary, could this, in this next two weeks, if we were to go and see some things that we thought collectively as a group would be more conducive for the park right now, a couple of replacement pieces or whatever, pull out the rusted, whatever that thing is, caterpillar, put something else there. I mean, I'm 46.
I'm 36.
What do you think?
It's a WUM.
I always thought it was a caterpillar.
It's a caterpillar.
It's a W-U-M, a WUM.
We learned something new today.
I've been doing it for 45 years. So that caterpillar, pull that caterpillar by that ground. And put something in its place. This community parks, and I don't want to misquote it, because I'm good at misquoting.
CPT.
Yeah, that guy. Could this, would could this fall in that area?
It certainly could.
Okay, I want to be clear on that.
However, I'm going to say, for community parks and playgrounds in particular, we have tried in the past to submit a grant application that covered pieces of two different parks that they definitely don't like. They want them all to be in one park. I don't know why. That's their caveat. So the community parks and playgrounds could certainly be used for that, but it couldn't be used for both in the same year.
And Councilwoman Nichols, we're talking about the lighting at Henry Park-
Oh, I know.
No, 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 hold on. We're talking about the lighting at Henry Park. We're talking about some of our playground equipment, and you referenced the, as I know it, the caterpillars. But what I'm also saying is that this is not saying that whatever the project is has to take place in Stephen Decatur Park.
Right.
What I could very easily see as well is a splash pad at Henry Park. And there are things that we can do that could help bolster the different things within our parks. It doesn't have to be at one specific spot.
Right, but I mean, if I'm hearing what Mary is saying at the same time, if we proposed an enhancement piece for Henry and then an upgraded replacement piece for Decatur, the chances of an approval is slim to none, because we're looking at two different locations at the same time.
The other thing is, is that we may look at this, and an idea might come up about some new playground equipment or splash pads, right? And then we might weigh that against the criteria of the grant. And it may say, hey, look, the better fit is lighting. Whereas we have this other awesome project, and as Ms. Pettenhaller said, we may want to pursue some other granting agencies for that.
Sure.
So all I'm asking for is, we don't even need a motion. We can just move this thing right over to the next meeting, and you'll see.
That's the table.
You should have a vote table.
Okay, go ahead.
A motion to table it at the next council meeting.
Mayor, are you still keeping comments from the public?
Yeah, well, hold on. Can we hear from Ms. Rose? Okay, yeah. Ms. Rose, name and address. We know each other.
Carrollways 307, Anne Drive. Uh, two things I implore you to really, really consider, keeping the basketball lights at Henry Park. You know, they've been promised, been promised for many, many, many years. Mary has tried so hard. I really would hate to see that go away for another year, another year. The newspaper articles where the Park Commission had entered that in were very, people were very happy to see that. And then one other thing, and this is in my crawl a little bit, the same evening, these folks went to the Parks Commission, I went as a director of We Heart Berlin, along with another director, Adrian Bellin. We made our present, he made a presentation, I'm just kind of there with him, for the basketball courts at Henry Park. We also received unanimous support from all of the members. And before we left, we were told specifically what we would have to have before we would even be able to come before the mayor and council. And everything was already done except our 501(c)(3). And same night, they're here without theirs, and, you know, we have, we're waiting and doing what we were told. Did they submit their Articles of Incorporation and everything?
Maybe I can answer this question. So I believe Mr. Wee is on your board, and I believe that Mr. Jeff Smith is on your board.
Yes, yes. Tony is president, Jeff is vice president, I'm secretary.
I've had multiple conversations with both of them about the status of that project, because it does seem very interesting. And the same concern has come up about the 501(c)(3) status. And if you look nationally right now, anybody that goes and applies for 501(c)(3) status, literally there's a backup for months. And what I told Tony and Jeff, both, on multiple occasions, is that we don't want to hold up that project. So if you have, and what I believe as of the last time I spoke, a couple of days ago, you're waiting on the painter to give you a date, to be able to paint the project. And I keep asking Tony and Jeff when we're going to have them here on the agenda. So I honestly think we're waiting a little bit on your end.
Okay, well, that I admit, we were specifically told that we could not come until we had all our paperwork. And I had to bring so many, you know, so many copies to give to get one of the agendas.
Well, if you're ready to go with that project, make sure you reach out so that we can try to have you on the next agenda.
All right, and did anybody read those people's Articles of Incorporation?
We've had them submitted.
They're on file. I can certainly send them out to you.
Well, I'm just interested that they are, the Articles of Incorporation were made by some woman from the state of Texas. I mean, does anybody check things beforehand? Who lists this first?
We can definitely take a look at those. Thanks for bringing it to our attention. But as far as the painting project goes, though, please let us know-
I will. I absolutely will.
All right, and I believe I had a motion, I lost track now, what it was from. And a second, so I have a motion by Councilmember Nerr to table Agenda Item, Motion 2021-14, the FY 2023 Annual Parks Program for Development until our next meeting. And I have a second by Councilmember Purnell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of both. And the motion to table until our next meeting passes unanimously. Thank you.
May I ask, what is the direction then that I need to take over the next two weeks?
So let's touch base tomorrow and see if we can find a couple of the examples that I have from MML and whether or not they would be a good fit for some of our locations. In addition, I have some plans for splash pads also. And if the council has any ideas or points of consideration, feel free to pass this along. But we do have to move quickly. So we'll circle back tomorrow morning or later this evening, if that's okay.
A friend of mine was on the board that helped get that inclusive park started in Salisbury. And I'm happy to send along some information, because I think that's very important.
And the funding partners, any of that information is very helpful. Anybody that's watching, that information is very helpful, so share it with us. So Agenda Item Number 3B is Motion 2021-15, Berlin Parks Commission Commemorative Program. And Mary Boland is also running point on that.
The program that's in your pack was actually a draft. I think the watermark didn't come through. It was a scan of copy. That happens sometimes. This is something that the Parks Commission has worked on for some time. We have had occasion in the past to have people come to the town and ask to do something, buy a bench, plant a tree, something in the name of a loved one or to commemorate an event or something like that. We've never had anything in place to say, okay, this is how to do that. So the interest of the Parks Commission was to put this program together. Chances are, it won't sit on a shelf until the next time somebody does come. Does not happen often. But it will be beneficial to be able to give people clear direction in what can be expected if they want to do something like this.
Thank you. Any questions for our deputy town administrator?
Yeah, Mary, one of the things that Ocean City ran into with their bench program on the boardwalk is the lifespan to these benches. Is that built into this work?
There is language in here that speaks to a particular timeframe. It's not to say, I want to, I'm not going to, I'm not going to try to-
I might be able to help you out on that.
What it is. But it does speak to a certain timeframe. If the object fails before that timeframe, then there are steps to take to replace it. If it fails after that timeframe, then it's done.
So it's not a forever project?
Exactly.
It's going to be five years, 10 years, whatever that takes.
And Councilmember Nerr, in our deputy town administrator's defense, this was slated to come on, what, about a month and a half ago?
Seven months.
And I put the brakes on it for a similar concern. And then it was adequately flushed out that they have that consideration built in. But it's a good point.
So I just, I just had a question. It's really this clarification question. Under acknowledgement of commemoration, you know, plaques are engraved, right there in gold, will be purchased by the town of Berlin. And then, I mean, I understand what this says here. Then the donor will be responsible for payment to the town for the cost of the plaques. So as long as there's no, as long as you feel there will be no confusion that the town's not actually putting up the money for this, that it's actually the donor giving it to the town, the town is purchasing.
Right, it says donor will be responsible for payment to the town for the cost.
Right, I just want to make sure that everyone feels that that's clear. So apparently that is, okay. There's no other problems, I'm going to bring the motion to approve?
So I have a motion by Councilmember Ores for Motion 2021-15, Berlin Parks Commission Commemorative Program. Looking for a second. And I have a second by Councilmember Nichols. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of both. And the Motion 2021-15 passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Four, I think has this been postponed, but I'll pass it along to Ivy. Do you have any comments for that, or?
We'll, we're just, we're going to shelve that and revisit it in the future.
Okay. So the Flower Street Arts Festival that was scheduled for August 14th, 2021, is going to be pushed to another date, and we'll see that on the agenda again in the upcoming weeks. Agenda Item Number Five is the PKS Audit Three-Year Engagement Approval. And our finance director, Natalie Slay, will be running point on that.
In the packet, it was a letter included, this engagement letter for PKS and company, our independent auditors, which is for three-year engagement. We have met with PKS management team a couple of weeks ago to discuss the engagement and three-year term and determine that it's cost-wise, it's more advantageous for the town of Berlin to enter three years than doing one-by-one, year-to-year engagement. On the engagement letter, last page, there are fees for June 21st, Fiscal 21, 22 and 23. $35,000 is the base for 21, $35,700 for Fiscal 22, and $36,400 for Fiscal 2023. And there is a separate fee for uniform financial statements, which are required to be prepared annually. And also, we might inquire additional costs if we do a single-year audit. That's if we have expenditures for the grants over $750,000.
Which, do you mind just letting them know what an example of that would be, like the art funding?
That would be the art funding that we will be receiving. It's not going to be in this year, and I don't see it going to come in Fiscal 22, possibly Fiscal 23, if we're starting the expenditures.
Thank you. Any questions for our finance director? If not, we're looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Councilmember Nerr to approve the three-year engagement approval with PKS for our audit. Looking for a second. I have a second by Councilmember Purnell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of both. And the motion to approve a three-year engagement with PKS for our audit passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Six is National Night Out for August 3rd, 2021. And Police Chief Arnold Downey is going to run point on that.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This is, I want to say, our 25th. And we missed last year, National Night Out. Retired Corporal, our senior officer Holland is the point person on this. He's been working the last two and a half months, getting everything coordinated. We have eight religious institutions that are vying to be a part of the program. Over 30 total community partners. And again, he's done a wonderful job. Once again, we're anticipating roughly 500 people. We did address the parking concerns across the street with the construction. We think that's going to be a big thing. And we've already made contact with the contractors, have everything moved out on that evening. We have additional parking with the multi-purpose building. And we've also, there are tangiers and tables from them. So again, it's a true community project.
Do we need any traffic assistance with people crossing in 113, do you think?
Well, generally, we don't have anybody, you know, coming across. We have their seat, that we can definitely have to move people out. But the light itself is a crossing point, and we generally don't have any problems with that. We're definitely looking forward to a lot of attendees, a lot of them park again, you know, in the park. Parking lot across the street, and it's actually worked out.
All right, so do you need a motion for this evening, or is there-
This is actually a special event, so we definitely need approval. And will be used out of town resources, public works, lighting department will be put electric up. And the water department always helps set everything up. So we definitely have to utilize a lot of town resources to make this actual community event.
Thank you. So we are looking for a motion for the National Night Out event for August 3rd, 2021.
Motion to approve.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Ores, a second by Councilmember Purnell. All in favor, say aye. All of both. And National Night Out for August 3rd, 2021. Do you want to plug the time chief?
It'll be 3:30 until 7 o'clock.
3:30 until 7 o'clock.
Rain or shine.
Rain or shine, passes unanimously. And we expect 1,000 people to make up for last year, right? All right, up next is Agenda Item Number Seven, the town administrator's report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a few things-
Just a few things. I want to publicly thank a number of folks. Start with Ivy Wells, this, the topic of the July 2nd fireworks. Ivy put the front work into it and saw it through to completion. Arnold's crew for, from what I gathered from Arnold, it was a fairly seamless in-and-out and done, done deal. Tim, Jamie, Jimmy, it was pretty much a team effort, and I really appreciate what everyone did. Again, to Ivy, not only for planning it, but seeing it all the way through to completion. She literally shut the lights out.
Turned them on and shut them off. No, I didn't shut them off, actually. Jamie came back and turned the lights off for me. But we thought it was going to take longer because the traffic flowed so smoothly out of the park that evening. It took no more than 15 minutes to get all the cars out of here and park. Super.
And I'd like to share with the council and the public, the town of Berlin is slated, I believe, by the end of the week to receive their first funding, if you will, from the art monies, and the amount is 2.2 million dollars. That money will go into a separate account. It needs to be allocated by the end of '24, and then spent by the end of '26. And I'm sure we're going to have lots of discussion on the proper usage and where your folks are using. So that's down the road. The folks out there, money, you can read again and again what it's authorized for, but it's a, it's a shot in the arm that's right around the corner. I did ink three individual contracts with roofing entities for the two pavilions in the park, as far as the roof, and also with planning buildings. So that work is scheduled to commence somewhere within the next 30 to 45 days. I'll open it up, and I better be careful of that. Everybody will show up, that 1,000 people that you just mentioned. But this coming Friday, 12:30, something that I know I like to do anyway, for the employee group, and I'll visit some of the merchants downtown and bring folks a milkshake, a handmade milkshake. If you don't like it, just smile. All right, so it's, I actually enjoy doing it with folks, so it's awesome.
Was that 12:30?
12:30. And then Jamie, about give them an update, if you will, real quick, on the 376-113. Don't give me that look.
I'll give you the same look.
I know.
Well, they've had a setback today, and by what I gathered from the state engineer or the state RPR, which is resident project representative out there, the manholes were delivered wrong today. So they're looking at two weeks of build, and the state highway said roughly there's a 28-day break. So we're looking at anywhere between four to six weeks before any work's done. I don't know what else to tell you. We might be having a conference call, Jeff, myself, and DBF and State Highway tomorrow or sometime this week to see what the next step is. So that's all I can tell you, that's all I found out today.
Well, that's unfortunate, but I'm glad that they're at least going to make them the right size. Anything else?
And I, before you get into departmental reports, Dave Engelhardt is not present tonight, so I'm going to present his report as well. The Board of Zoning Appeals has approved 33 new dwelling units off of Maple to visualize where they're at, pretty much on the real estate that is in between Maple and Flower. Okay, so they still need to go before the planning commission for site plan approval. The developer is an organization called UTR Ventures. They, these 33 units are fee simple, no rentals. And so there's a long ways to go, but just to give you an idea what their progress is. Homes for America, a lot of work. It's amazing how fast we get the material, how fast things have happened, the civil law crew off of Maple with rentals. And that concludes our report.
Thank you. Any questions for the town administrator?
Yeah, go back to that other project, the 33, they're what now?
The Board of Zoning Appeals has approved a 33 units that would be constructed off of Maple, that real estate behind Wallace's house.
Yeah.
Their townhouse.
Their townhouses, okay. However.
Thank you for that, playing English.
33 dwelling units, okay, townhouses. But they still have a long ways to go, they need to go before the planning commission. I'm sorry.
What was the exception, the EZA group?
I'm sorry?
What was the exception they threw?
I do not know.
I know. Our code requires that the townhouse be 18 feet wide.
Right.
And there would be 60.
60.
One more to add.
All right. Any further questions for the town administrator's report? If not, we'll move into Agenda Item number eight, which is departmental reports. And we'll start with Ivy, if you don't mind, Economic and Community Development.
Sure. Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to let everyone know that the Worcester County Health Department is offering vaccinations during the Berlin Farmer's Market for the next two Sundays from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. They will be set up on Main Street during that time, and obviously, the vaccinations are free. We encourage anyone who still needs one to come down to see their vaccination. And then I also wanted to mention that the, I was on the board for Beach to Bay Heritage Area Commission, and we have been approved to submit a grant, it's called a MeridaF Grant through the Rural Council of Maryland, for an African-American history art mural of Dr. Charles Albert Tinley to go on to the side of potentially the Brewer Hill Building in downtown. We had our initial meeting this morning, and executive director of that organization has leaked a challenger, let us know that we were approved to apply for grant funding for that. We will be working on the grant the next couple of weeks.
That's great, Dave. Thank you. Any questions for our Economic and Community Development Director, Ivy Wells? All right, if not, our Electric Utility Director, Tim Warren.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a few things to report on. The solar ray project at 113 Scorefield Street, 48 KW system, basically has been completed. It's passed building and electrical inspection, and the NDA, Maryland Energy Administration, inspection is scheduled for the 20th of July. Then from there, we have to apply for the grant funding release, which there's some documentations and forms and that type of thing. But other than that, the system is doing really well. As of right now, today, since the system was activated, that it is supplying 50% of the electricity for the entire facility. Now, that's not including the substation that's supplying the town, that's just the buildings, the shop. So it's doing exactly what it's supposed to be doing. Then also, on Prospect Drive, we installed a construction service for two new homes that are being built there. And then also, at the Tad Point, which is the area behind our shop that goes out to where we tied the Delmar for Power, we've been working on tree trimming, that transmission line back through there. That's an ongoing project. And then also, we had two power outages, storm-related, which Troy, you're familiar with one of it, your property out there in that area. That was on Thursday, July 1st, which was at Broad and Prospect, and that was the issue with some tree limbs that came down during the storm. And that power outage lasted about one and a half hours. And then also, Monday, which was July 5th, at Cedar Maple, we had some lightning damage to one of our poles, which that outage was about an hour. And also, we have started peak shaving at the power plant. We generated June 28th, 29th, 30th, from about 2:00 till 7:15 in the evening. Then we also generated July 6th, July 7th, from 1:00 to 6:30. And then July 12th, which is today, 5:00 till 7:15. So far, we've generated during all the peaks that we needed to, and no issues. Want to talk about the lighting?
I asked Tim, I think everyone's aware that the lighting downtown for the trees, the string lights are, with the exception of the Atlantic Hotel, they're a little. A suggestion has been, the fancy term is uplighting, so the vendor actually provided us with one of the lights. So Tim, Tim gets a chance to play with a piece of equipment, and then Kelsey will show you some photographs that Tim took of the lighting on a tree with the various colors.
We did the lights.
Yeah.
A lot of ooh and aah, yeah. I didn't have a tree in here, so.
All the lights.
Kelsey, do you want to put up some pictures?
Yeah, I have two, and I have two more.
Yep, this is, I actually took this home, and this is a tree out in front of our property. And what I did, I just set it on the ground, and then I operated it through my phone. I have an app that controls the lighting system, which the lighting system is protected by codes, in which you first install it and activate it, you have to issue its code number, just like a garage opener, for example. That way, nobody else can get into it and operate it. That was one of our concerns. The lights can be controlled remotely from your cell phone. If you're just driving by in a car, you can activate it and change the colors and that type of thing. So anyway, I downloaded the app to my phone, and I'll turn it on, which right now it's blue. All right, and then what you can do with it, you can dim it if you want to, you can raise it up. You can do blue, red, green, you can do white. You can let it activate and do its own thing if you want, it will change colors itself. So it's pretty neat. It comes with a, the app comes with a wheel with multiple colors that you can basically mix the colors, like from green to yellow, that type of thing. Come around and change it. You don't have the ability to control. Something I'm sure is that this app can be downloaded to, let's say, three or four designated people in town, like one person I'm thinking of, myself, as Ivy, myself, maybe Jeff or Duell.
Anybody but Jay.
Anybody but Jay. But you can actually, you know, each tree, you can have all the same color if you want, or you can have different colors, or, let me turn this thing off here. Where? Now, this project, you can, like I was saying, at each tree downtown, you can have different colors at each tree if you want, or mixed colors. You can have it for different seasons, for example, for Halloween, you can make all the trees orange if you want to, or supported law enforcement, you can do blue, cancer awareness, pink, that type of thing. So it's, it's a pretty neat concept, and it looks, it looks really nice.
And how many are you talking about installing?
Right now, I think I counted about 15. And we had already got bids on the equipment, and then the electric department, we would take care of installing it, running the power to it and all of that. And we estimated around $10,000 to do all of downtown, the trees that we designated.
But that also includes the electrical infrastructure for?
That's correct, yes. That includes, like, the material itself, I think, is like 8,000, and then 2,000 of it would be our labor, the electric material, to get power to each light fixture and that type of thing. Now, these are, one thing I did notice, and it was brought to my attention, Ivy actually mentioned it, is you see this grade on here where it's kind of rough? And one thing I was thinking about was dirt getting, you know, stuck down in there and covered in, uh, leaves, that type of thing. This is flush mounted to the ground. They actually make a smooth cover that's not graded like this. That way, it wouldn't collect dirt and grime and that type of thing. Because that was one of my concerns, is who's going to go through and clean them all the time and make sure they're clean? But they do make a smooth cover, where you don't really have to deal with that sort of thing. And they come with a five-year warranty.
Just on the person that I might collect them, I was a little, I'm curious to see where we're heading with the, with their removal of those lights, and that's really really cool.
And we tried to re, well, we talked about maybe repurposing some of the lights, and they just were not in a condition to even do that, so.
So Tim, when you do a color change, that's synced across all 15 trees once?
At one time? No, I believe you would have to go to each tree and change it.
Each tree?
I have to find out. You know, what happened, when we received this, the vendor was actually going on vacation the next day. Well, he just got back today.
Right.
So I really haven't had time to go into too much detail about, you know, every little thing that it is.
So on the app, you'd select tree one, change the color tree two, and go over?
Correct. You can designate, you know, a certain light fixture with a number which has a code, and then you just go up to it and change it.
And how many lumens does that light for that?
I think it was, what it was I read in, actually, I was just looking at that.
While he's looking, we did ask during one of our staff meetings, can anybody just download the app and change them? You have to program, each one has an individual serial number that has to be programmed into the app.
That's correct.
Because you don't want anyone downloading and changing all the colors.
I'll get that number.
It's 800, 800 lumens, 800. But you can actually demo, it's got demo cable.
Right. So the trees in town, they can be putting these under compared to your tree demos here, are trees larger?
Some of the trees are. This tree here is maybe 12, 15, you'd call it at the most. Now, we do have some bigger trees, like across from Stevenson Church, for example, at the park up there. I have to meet with the vendor and discuss, well, how many lights are we talking about in each tree? This is new to me, too, also, so it's something that I'm learning. But I'm used to the traditional lights up in the trees itself.
Yeah. But you think with our larger trees, you could get the same light spread you have?
Yes, I do, definitely.
Well, don't tell anybody you're an amateur, you look like a pro.
Hey, I like learning about this stuff, so I'll make it work.
Thank you. Do you have anything else for your report?
No.
Thank you. Any other questions for our Electric Utility Director? Thank you for the doubt, that was pretty cool.
Thank you.
All right, up next is our Chief of Police, Arnold Downing.
Again, good evening, everyone. I'd like to echo what Jeff said. Ivy did a wonderful job coordinating and planning the fireworks, and the staff across the street did a wonderful job of really setting everything up. Everything was right there for us to go ahead and have it to be a smooth entrance and exit. The park was utilized to its fullest. I mean, we still have lots and lots of space left, but the individuals got to be closer to the actual fireworks, and I think we made a wonderful decision in keeping it at the actual parent park. It really went smooth. I mean, the flush out was, was easy compared to what it could have been. We're also heading to the report from Jeff, and we want to thank Jeff for dinner and Delmar Pizza for being, again, supportive of us and providing our dinner that evening. It was definitely well.
I had to ride all the way from there to hear smell of it.
It's a great pizza. So, you know, we keep that going, they're wonderful supporters of all enforcement, and we really appreciate them. The 376 project and everything that's been going on with that has actually caused some deterioration at Decatur Street coming in, to Dollar General, it's becoming more and more noticeable. So I think that's something that's going to have to be addressed before too long. We've had a lot of equipment, not only there, but throughout town. So we're going to start to, you know, seeing that. Maple Avenue, big trucks up and down, Flower Street, a lot more than. Maple Avenue, big trucks popping down, Flower Street, a lot more than, you know, we could ever even imagine before the projects start. We're talking about, you know, five to six major projects all going on at the exact same time and moving around. So we just want to keep that to the forefront, I want it on everybody's mind. And I am honored to be elected the President of the Police Association from MML. I started July 1st, and I get to represent the eighty municipal law enforcement agencies. So I take that seriously, and hopefully I can make contact with each one of those agencies and find out really what we need to go ahead and do with the municipalities. I want to go ahead and make the statement. The municipalities did not speak up during the police reform, and we didn't have any input whatsoever, talking about municipalities, not the police. And we stood silent. So in that end, we actually lost powers. The county actually is going to have more say than each individual municipality in how the police department actually works and functions from this point on. And we didn't have the opportunity to speak directly to our delegates in regards to that. A whole lot of people spoke, and delegates definitely listened on the shore. But again, we had a deaf ear from the municipalities, and that was unfortunate. And the decision's going to be the county making a lot of decisions for us, unfortunately. Jake Day is the President of MML, so I'm going to be on the board of directors also. So it's going to be great to go ahead and work with him. And I think we're going to have representation, you know, on issue and shore. That's my report.
Congrats.
Congratulations. I also heard that we're going to be acquiring a new piece of uniform, cowboy hats for everybody?
Well, I haven't, we, I haven't even get past that point.
I know, nobody's talking about that for a reason.
I, I, I did.
Go ahead.
I had to break it up, so.
Well, again.
I didn't want to steal your thunder.
Well, you know, our staff was there, and they either said, the planning, again, I don't care what we do, if you sit down and have the meetings and the planning, things will go ahead and fall in the right way. This is probably one of the best ones we've ever had. And they had concerns in the beginning. They had the meeting, moved the start line, finish line, and again, the bank and all the community people said, we have an issue with this and that. Nobody noticed any problem whatsoever. I mean, everything ran so smooth, and everybody was energized, and I think it was something that the community needed. So, yes, Merle had the cowboy hat, and wanted to know if everybody could go ahead and get the white steps. And I said, well, we wear a black uniforms. He says, we're not bad guys. I said, okay, I get what you're saying.
Well, it was funny, I saw him on the, after the event, and he said, you saw it on Facebook? I said, yeah. He said, where do I go? I said, you're trending. So you just go on Facebook and you find it.
He's always trending, every year. I think the bathtub races are his, so.
He does a good job, and we appreciate it.
I love him.
Any questions for the Chief of Police? All right, Dave Gaskell, any? No, all right. Our Finance Director, Natalie Sleck?
Jameson, sure. Thank you, Jeff was still in my thunder for $2.4 million that we've received from American Rescue Plan. Those funds is the first payment, and they will go in separate account. This account will be dedicated to keep those funds until we decided to expenditure or encumber them and after multiple discussions in the future. So the account is the money market will bear a little bit of interest, which will help a little. So this account will be set up in Bank Ocean City. It will be, the monies will belong to General Fund, it will be part of the reserves till we decide what the intentions. Also, State of Maryland allocated relief act funds, and two entities were dedicated to expense to help electric residential accounts for multiple municipalities through the state of Maryland. Sureup had administered $24,445 to the town of Berlin to cover the eligible residents who applied and qualified for outstanding residential electric prior to June 30th. Also, Public Service Commission had administered $27,255 for customers with urges. And the press release was done to announce that. And also, there are certain specific rules how we're going to dedicate those monies. Basically, the amount of outstanding electric residential urges were much larger than 27. So we will be taking a percent, 27,000 is approximately 20% of what we originally requested from the Public Service Commission. So the accounts that will fall into the category will receive a 20% reduction on the account through the whole entire town. So there is no specific, the priority is Sureup, which has already been covered. And then the lower priority is everybody else, but people who went to Sureup, applied, qualified, they have received the reduction in electric bills. So that's what we will be doing. Additionally, every recipient will receive a letter through the regular postal service announcing that they will be, they will see credit on the account.
Okay. Any questions for our Finance Director, Natalie Sleck? There's one thing, I think, just because, I mean, we've been familiar with it, but maybe some people watching or not, we do get to keep the interest that accrues on that money from the art funding, just so that everybody's aware.
In the description, it was stated that we're allowed to keep the monies in the interest-bearing account, so we just go in as suggested.
This doesn't have one.
Also, we have met with Jean Howard Way, and she presented some observation and results from what she valued for the past fiscal year in regards to the water and sewer. We have not set the date because it's still in review, but we will be seeing her soon come into the Mayor Council Meeting to present her findings. It's going to be more of a generic state of water and sewer fronts with some recommendations. And then the next step will be is more deeper study and great change or increases or decreases. It will be more, more information coming after.
Thank you. Up next is our Water Resources Director, Jamie Latchell.
I have nothing.
That was very short. Up next is our Superintendent of Public Works, Jimmy Charles.
Hello, Mayor. Mayor and Council, real quick, with the storm, topic of Storm Els moved through last week. We were preparing all our equipment, tools and signings, but with minimal, fortunately enough, we were minimal damage. And we had some sticks and debris that we went around, picked up, and we ran the sweeper. And I think we dressed just about every street we could with the sweeper. And so we moved through. Storm was, we were lucky there. We helped with the bathtub races on Friday night, we helped street block each, and then we came back in and cleaned the streets. Jamie and two of his crew, and then myself and three of the public works guys, we got all the hay picked up, which they picked up back, and we picked up ours, and we got everything swept up and very quickly in time and matter. So that was a good project. On Thursday, July 8th, we removed our last single-stream dumpster this past week. With that, we now have our cardboard dumpster, is the only dumpster over there, for cardboard only. And real quick, a couple of options of where residents can put out to the curb is, all the residents can put curbside recycling for their pickups. There is a mill, what was it, Henry Mill? Mill, Henry Road and Flower Street is the closest dump station that they can take recycling to. They have 24 hours at the Walmart area. There's also Ocean Pines has a South Gate area where they can take recycling. Bishopville has one, Whalersville has one, and our Newark Landville has one. And then on our town website, you can find our recycling days, what we accept, and you can find our trash days, too, on that. And then also, on the Worcester County website, you can, they have all their locations where they have, on their website, of, you know, like, six drop-offs, what they accept, and the hours of operation.
Right. Thank you. Any questions for our Superintendent of Public Works, Jimmy Charles? I do have one thing that I would like to thank you and the team for. I noticed quite a few weeds that were on many of our main currid areas, and I see them all dying, so thank you. But, all right, up next is our Deputy Town Administrator, Mary Wallen.
I don't have anything, sir.
Thank you. And our Administrative Manager, Kelsey Dunne.
I don't have anything.
All right, thank you. Item number nine on the agenda are comments for the council. Councilmember, pronounce.
Oh, thanks to Berlin Electric Department. That wasn't just one of my outages. I had my neighbor's elderly widow, she was highly concerned. I happened to be over there and took care of her pretty quickly. You know, 15 minutes, you had people on the site, and it was done in the middle of the rainstorm, in about 40 minutes. Thank you so much, it was great.
Thank you. Councilmember, Nicole?
Oh, I have a lot of positives.
Good.
Let's start with the positives. First thing, fireworks were phenomenal, breaked up Ivy and crew, turned out really well. Was a little surprised to see the folks that close to the venue this time with their cars in the other spot. You know what I'm talking about? But that was pretty cool. I mean, it worked, it was good, so it was really good. Coming from the worry board, so I was really pleased to see that.
We have a diagram that gets submitted not only to the fire company, to the county fire marshal, and the state fire marshal, and it has a diagram of where people can sit and do the fireworks, and they, we made sure that they were clearly in.
That was, that was good, I liked it. Where was I going next? Yes, the weeds. Jimmy Charles, let me tell you this, and I don't care what anybody says, they can talk dirty all they choose, but I will say this. I was at that Stevenson Hater Park at 6:00 a.m., after all this weed controversy, checking out weeds that people were talking about. 6:00 a.m., I was there checking on the building and talking.
I don't know where you were at, but you did call there.
I was, I told you where I was. Anyway, when I got there, weeds had been sprayed already. Jimmy Charles was there before I was at 6:00 a.m. spraying weeds, so thank you for doing that.
We, we got rid of the weeds.
Or whatever they did, whatever. Bullying spray? Sorry, whatever you do to get rid of weeds, I don't know what it is. Don't take my word, because I don't know what they did. But he was there before I was, taking care of it. So kudos to you, your crew. If I said spraying and they really don't spray, please don't call this man about spraying, because it was my mistake, my head. Third on my list, where was I? I'm, I'm not.
You stole the followers.
I'm, I'm almost done, I promise, and I'm not, I'm being serious about this, though, seriously. Positives, I don't have any more positives, except where things are going well, and I love it. Those lights are cool, Tim. I do like the lights, I do like that. But on the part, it's not, I won't call it negative, I'll just call it a nag in my crawl. This is what I'll say. I'm back on that whole disc thing, and I'm not, this is not a negative, I just want a little bit of clarity, and we're not going to stay on this long, because we were on that one for a while today, and I don't. When it comes to this pond area, I know you mentioned it, and I hope that the disc folks heard it. If they didn't, please make sure that this is in the notes when we see them, that they understand we don't feel comfortable with the discs by the pond. That was me, I thought that you made that clear.
I mentioned it.
I want to make sure, right, I want to make sure that that's, I don't have a problem with testing it out to see how it works, but the pond, it seems to be a really touchy spot for many of the residents before tonight, during tonight, and it will be whenever they choose to come back and try this out. So that, I want to make sure that they understand those pond spots are a hard pass. And back to the positive. Tonight's been great, good job, guys, thanks for all again.
Thank you. The Councilmember, Mayor? And Councilmember, Horace? And Agenda item number 10, comments for the mayor. I don't have anything that hasn't been said already. Agenda item number 11, comments from the public? I think, yeah, I think you're up. Sorry about that. And, and poor Miss Maine, no, come on up here. Poor Miss Maine, I told her, it won't be a long meeting. Maybe I shouldn't say that.
This is a short meeting, I'd like to know how long your long meeting is.
This was not, I apologize, but I can't.
That's okay, this one. My name is Donna Maine, 205 North Main Street, and I'm here as a member of the Worcester County Library Foundation, and I'm here with Carol Rose, who's the President of the Worcester County Library Foundation, and Jennifer Ray, who is the Worcester County.
What's your official title?
Director of Libraries. So, and we just want to publicly acknowledge and thank Jeff, who I already recognized with every time I saw him before, we both had masks and heavy coats on, for his help getting the sidewalk that connects North Main Street to the sidewalk that is in front of the library. And a lot of people have commented on how they feel about enhanced safety. I certainly was concerned about the, how to get there and not go in the street. And I emailed Jeff and talked to him on the phone that same day or the next day. We met out there at the site with one of the Worcester County or the Berlin branch employees. We agreed that it was really a need, and just made a plan. So we just wanted to thank you. What's that?
What I've done.
We need a crosswalk, so.
Okay, right, crosswalk. One of our big concerns was where there is handicap accessibility on the library side. We wanted to make sure the sidewalk matched up on the other side. I think that's where the crosswalk will go. So that, you know, someone pushing a stroller, or someone in some kind of walker, or what have you, would be able to get from North Main Street, go through the library safely. Jeff worked with St. Highway, we had some conversations with Berlin Fire Company about needing more of, more of an easement, so we're good with that, but we just wanted to say a thank you. And it's a big enhancement for North Main Street.
I agree. And the library.
And the library, absolutely.
Okay, I agree.
So, that's it?
Steve, too. We are also, we are also here to thank Jeff, and Jimmy, and Tim from Berlin Heritage Foundation. Donna and I are based on the board. Thanks to all that you did for us on the early, early morning when Governor Hebby came cleaning the street, talking some limbs, and said, was, thank you, thank you very, very much. And maybe, Jimmy, maybe Dave Gaskell could check to see if somebody really does have a birthday every Friday. Thank you very much.
She made a really, really good cake, and everybody told them this was her birthday.
I didn't get a piece, I didn't get a piece, so.
It's very hard to miss Friday.
Yeah, just wanted to thank you so much. Thank you for making it happen so quickly. I really appreciate it. This is a busy time of year for us, and so are meetings, so it's been very nice to have that sidewalk. It happens so fast, so thank you.
Thank you. And it's great to have everybody here. Thank you. All right, any other comments from the public? I don't know if we have any more public left? Okay.
I just thought about.
I changed your role, where are we?
No, I just thought about something, the accent, the accent lighting downtown. The trees that are located across from Stevenson Church, we could actually set these lights up temporarily on the ground. There's electricity already at the base of each one of those trees. So we could set them up and just do a demo at nighttime. The council and the mayor just take a look at what it's actually going to look like before we move forward to do the rest of the town. Just thought that would be.
Let's do that.
You all wait there for me.
I think that's a good idea. We'll find the time that we can do that.
That way, if we don't move through the whole town, we just do that first, take a look at it.
Are we thinking in the next week, in the next two weeks, what's the time around?
I would say probably in the next two weeks.
Okay, so we'll make sure that dates out, and we'll pick something that's not a too obnoxious color. You're non-charged, because you would be having every color on the grid. Comments from the press? I don't see any. Dean's not here with us this evening, so who would like to?
Troy? I'd like to make a motion we adjourn.
Thank you. Is that getting all the members say hi? All right, thank you.
Phil is the second.